Altered or the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. First item of business is roll call.
Miller.
Here.
Lamsey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Chantel.
Here.
Pepper.
Oh, here.
Sofa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malak.
Here.
Uwe.
Here.
Saran.
Here.
Vogel singer.
Here.
That's thirteen.
Next item of business is a reminder, should please speak directly into the microphone. We are recording for BATV, so that goes for council members and anyone in the audience that addresses us. People at home cannot hear us and people who are watching the episode later can't hear us unless we're speaking into the microphone. Item number three is to prove the minutes for May 23rd, 2023, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Item passes. Item number four is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Have a request. Looking ahead at the agenda tonight, and there's a lot of very important topics that we need to be very informed and well discussed upon, I just want to maybe bring up the possibility that if we arrive at 10:00 PM and we have a significant part of the agenda left, that we table the rest of the agenda for next Tuesday.
I bet you mean next COW?
I would, if we need it sooner, I would be up for a special meeting next Tuesday. If it can wait till next COW and we think there's space on that agenda, that would be fine. I just, my concern is that our effectiveness as a committee to make well-informed policy decisions as the night gets later.
Eleven thirty. A little rough last time, so.
I agree.
We need a vote? No? Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion at that point.
The table it, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, do it matters from the public. Anything that is not listed on the agenda, does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss? Good evening.
Good evening. Susan Russo, resident of Batavia. I'm here tonight to make the city council aware of an opportunity to respond to new information regarding the carbon capture system and sequestration system at Prairie State. IMEA made public on June 28th that Prairie State Generating Company is planning to enter into a memorandum of understanding with a consortium of contractors and investors to construct and operate a carbon capture and sequestration system at Prairie State. IMEA also announced that they will begin a campaign to urge its member municipalities to renew their contracts with IMEA more than five to 10 years before these contracts become due for renewal. Clearly Prairie State is rapidly moving forward with its carbon capture and sequestration system, and IMEA is trying to assure the consortium's financiers that it has long-term contracts in place with its member municipalities. At NIPA's meeting on June 22nd, Richard Heinemann, NIPA's attorney, assured me that he absolutely would be given an opportunity to review the contracts before the NIPA board is asked to approve them. And in light of these developments and the city council's April 25th discussion, city council has an opportunity to consider passing a formal resolution to achieve two goals. First, to confirm that Gary Holm, as Batavia's representative on the NIPA board, will vote against the carbon capture at Prairie State. And two, direct the NIPA board to require Attorney Heinemann to write a letter of opinion to NIPA regarding liability implications for NIPA and its three members concerning the construction, ownership, operation, health and safety issues, environmental issues, and eventual closure of a carbon capture system and sequestration site before the contracts are voted on. The second request is particularly critical for the protection of everyone in Batavia. Taxpayers, residential and commercial ratepayers, and you and the city staff as members of Batavia City Government. Without a legal opinion, the city of Batavia has no documented assurance that it will have no exposure to liability for this carbon capture system. I look for, I will look forward to discussion of this issue at a future meeting, and I thank you for listening to me tonight.
What you bring up will require almost an entire meeting, so thank you. We will definitely discuss that. Thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to address? Moving on to item number six, which is ordinance 23-30, it's an amendment to the comprehensive land use map.
I'm going to turn it over to Drew, but I do have a question. Do we have these in the right order? Because let's say you get down to eight and that's not going to pass, but you've already changed the comprehensive plan. It seems like they're out of order, but I don't know. That's just my opinion. Doesn't really matter here, so it would matter if it gets, when it gets to city council, depending on what the votes are, because then you're changing things that might not need to be changed if it were to get to that point.
From a procedural standpoint, those are in the correct order for how the approvals would be. If you are inclined to not be in favor of the project, then presumably you would vote against the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning amendment as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so this evening, we have four action items for the Leo Brown Group's proposed medical resorts at the northeast corner of Main and Deer Path. There are four, those three ordinances would each take a different step of the proposal or items that are necessary for, to approve the proposed project. And then the last is a resolution for a plan of consolidation to merge existing lots on the property. This property was annexed to the city back in 1996 as a proposed office commercial development and has not developed for that use. In 2011, during consideration of a proposed senior apartment proposal on the property, the city council did approve ordinance 1111, which did revoke that original conditional use, but the underlying zoning for office and commercial remain in place. So in terms of the ordinances that are before you tonight, and I'll just address all of them in terms of what they appear on the agenda, it's six through 10, but the first ordinance is ordinance 2330. This would amend the comprehensive plan land use map designation of the properties from a split designation of general commercial and office to a residential eight to 15 dwelling unit per acre, which would support the proposed zoning classification of R4. The second action is both a rezoning, reclassifying the property from that split designation again, this time on the zoning map to the R4-based zoning district. The applicant also requests a plan development with amendment for several aspects of the project. Three of those items, as outlined in the staff report, are first to waive a private open space requirement in the R4 district. Essentially, this is for patios or decks for a residential unit. The applicant proposes basically one large private open space in the center courtyard of the proposed site, and that would allow for them to also offer programming in that space versus a private open space at an individual unit. The second is to waive a request or requirement for 25% covered parking. This provision, as outlined in the staff report, really is for residential and multifamily, multifamily with individual units with the proposed nursing care or the medical resort use. Most of that parking would be for staff and for visitors. The third item is a request for, with the requirement or limitation we have on maximum parking, they are requesting more parking than would otherwise be required by the zoning code. This is a more recent change to the zoning code, so this is really kind of a test in a residential situation. I find the staff report that a lot of discussion when we proposed that, that change of regulation was more for commercial situations. In this particular situation, there is no other adjacent Ostry parking, and the applicant has indicated that based on their other locations, they do see a need, particularly over periods of turnover of employees, that additional parking spaces are needed. The next ordinance is ordinance 2332. That ordinance would be for conditional use for nursing care. That's for nursing home, and that's how the use is defined in our zoning code. The conditional use is also reflective of all the conditions and modifications that are required or listed in the plan development. So basically, those same conditions would apply to the conditional use. The last action is a resolution. This is a plan of consolidation. It would create some easements along with some right-of-way dedications as well for the property. At the public hearing, the applicant did walk through the proposal with the commission. They noted some of the design considerations that they made through the course of the design and development. They did go through the services that were offered, and they did note that they're designing not only for state regulations, but also meet best practices in their industry. Three members of the public did address the commission. They did note several concerns with the proposed use, mostly along with the potential impacts for their properties, particularly discussing some orientation of the, the site, location of some utility driveways and other aspects of the project. The applicant, or through the course of the discussion, the applicant did propose to, or actually the commission requested, the applicant raised the height of the perimeter fence, which the applicant did agree to, addressing some of those conditions. Another resident did ask about ambulances on the site and whether sirens would be used on the site. A member of the project team did note that their policy is not to use sirens when exiting or entering the site for transportation. Another speaker also asked about lighting and burmine on the site. So the, the applicant and their team did agree to increase the number, the amount of landscaping on the property, especially along the perimeter, as another condition, or which was a condition of approval by the commission. They did agree to increasing the height of the enclosures for both the dumpster and for other operational equipment like the generator. They discussed the proposed layout of the site and did note that basically the, it's more institutional functions of the site are more located at the southwest corner of the site, of the building. So the, the planning mission did recommend approval of the proposed use. They proposed, voted six to zero for the design review, subject to the conditions within the ordinances or approval of the ordinances that are before you tonight, and they did recommend six to zero approval of the ordinances that are before you tonight with the recommended actions. And staff does recommend approval tonight.
So is the next step, or just kind of the applicant present what they're doing? Is that what we want to do right now?
So the applicant is here, they, I believe they can present if, if that would be the request of the commission or committee.
I think that makes sense, and then we can go around and ask questions.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like the, we've got a whole slideshow presentation, you'd like the whole slideshow?
Depends on how many slides it is.
Yeah.
If it goes to 10, then we're going to cut you off.
Yeah. I am happy to put that up and talk through it, although I believe most of what we have presented is already in the plan. We're delighted to be here. I'm Austin Dempsey with Batavia Enterprises, and I've got pretty much the entire design team here. Happy to bring anybody up to answer any questions. We've got architectural engineering, the end user. Our development partner is, is here, so we're happy to go through all of that. And what we're trying to bring to the community is a first-class, state-of-the-art medical resort that is for skilled rehabilitation and, and really to help the, the community, to provide something in the community that is not currently here in Batavia. And a number of you may know, I have a direct reflection of, of this experience. My father-in-law, who's a Batavia resident a few years ago, happened to have a stroke and a heart attack, and as a Batavia resident, we didn't have an opportunity to send him to a skilled facility like this. He had to go to a different community for that. The guys that are here with us this evening really are quite amazing. They've got 19 facilities in six states and are currently, as of today, taking care of about 1,700 patients. It is, it is an organization that knows what they're doing and brings world-class, state-of-the-art technology to the rehabilitation. This isn't just, I mean, this is for anyone who's a Batavia resident or anyone in the community that is, that needs this type of, of first-class facility. From 16 years old, if you've got, you know, God forbid, something happens to somebody in an auto accident, right here in Batavia, we can have a state-of-the-art facility that can be there to help rehabilitate that, that person all the way up to any age. So it is truly amazing, and I'm happy to put the slides up or have the, the team come up and answer any particular questions that, that you have, but I'm delighted to be part of this organization that is, is bringing this to the community, and I think it's going to do a lot, a lot to help not only Batavia residents, but everybody else in the valley.
I'll leave it up to the rest of the council. If you guys would like to see things in more detail, I mean, I looked at the presentation, but I don't know if anybody has any specific questions or if they just would like, you know, a quick run through the slides and then.
I just have a general question.
Sure.
So in terms of the facility, I know you indicated, you know, other communities have them. Is this comparable, are you comparing this to like Marion Joy, Shirley Ryan? I mean, what do we, what is this comparable to?
Yeah, you know, I'm happy to, I'm happy to bring up Jared, who's the operations director for Ignite, but this, this is a medical, this is a medical resort, and he can maybe talk about how they competitively are different than some of the other offerings that are a little dated.
That's, yeah, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, that was a great question. My name's Jared Carr. I'm the senior VP of Operations for Ignite. It's a great question. You know, we do do a lot of the same things that, you know, the Shirley Ryan Ability Lab can do. You know, you mentioned Marion Joy, you know, it is, you know, similar in, in aspects to that, but obviously what we believe we do is very different. You know, for all intents and purposes, we are licensed as a nursing home. I myself, for example, am a nursing home administrator by trade, you know, but we don't like to necessarily label ourselves as that because of some of the stigmas that can around, can surround nursing homes. We, you know, really provide a lot of short-term rehabilitation, speech, occupational, and physical therapy. It's very intense, short-term.
Talk about the size of your facility, your, your therapy facility is much larger than...
Oh, yeah. Traditional therapy gym is probably in the realm of eight to 900 square feet. The therapy gyms that we build are four to 5,000 square feet, and we put, you know, all of our, our resources into the nursing and rehabilitation care that, that we provide in the buildings.
So you're going to have OT, speech therapy, physical therapy. Are you going to have any PMR doctors on staff?
What's that?
You're going to have PMR doctors on staff?
What?
Physical medicine and rehabilitation board certified.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what we do, we have, you know, physicians that we partner with for the hospital, so we don't necessarily have them on our staff, but they can come to us as many times a week as they need to.
You'll be under the same nursing home regulations. They only got to show up once a month, right?
Not even once a month, hopefully, if we're lucky.
Okay.
But yes, we're under the same nursing home regulations.
Jared, do you have a question?
Yeah, a quick question. So what is the length of stay of the traditional or average patient? Is this, it sounds like it's not really geared towards like long-term.
Yeah, a little bit of what we do is long-term, but you're, you're absolutely correct. Most of what we do is between 14 and 21 days. You know, people are with us in and out, you know, our, our main focus is, you know, if people have had, you know, a stroke, a heart attack, knee replacement, a hip replacement, God forbid, a car accident, they're, you know, in the hospital, they're with us, they're back home in a couple of weeks with their family.
How far out, like, I'm thinking of other communities would be using this facility? I mean, how, is anywhere in Chicagoland could apply to come to one of these beds?
No, that's, I mean, yeah, absolutely, everyone can, but, you know, we do have other facilities in the Chicagoland area, so, you know, we would, you know, look to, to send people to different places, but honestly, it depends a lot to what people, what hospital people go to, so 90 to 95% of the people who come to us come straight from the hospital. So if they're at a hospital that's near one of our facilities, we strategically locate ourselves so that it's an easy transfer for them. And typically, people go to the hospital near their home, which is where they live, so.
You might want to mention partnering with Northwestern.
Yeah, and we are partnering with Northwestern on this project as well, and they've given their full support in our certificate of need meeting recently, which we obtained the certificate of need for the facility as well.
They'll be doing like direct transfers from Delano and Valley West.
Yeah.
What's the closest facility similar to this, to Batavia?
Actually, it could be ourselves, which is Ignite Hanover Park, which is only about 25 to 30 minutes away, I believe. But, you know, I'm not 100% sure off the top of my head. I know we have it somewhere. Or Ignite McHenry, that's true. We have another facility in McHenry, Illinois. Yes.
Therapy facility and room, are those employees directly hired by you, or do you use an outside company to contract for that type of work to be done?
Awesome question. What we do is totally in-house, so the model that we've built was designed not to necessarily need to rely on outside companies because, you know, we can't necessarily vet them ourselves, so every single employee in the building is our employee that we've vetted and interviewed and trained ourselves. But great question.
You talked about, or was mentioned by Drew, that the, you don't use sirens going in and out, but obviously, these are generally not, people coming in are generally not coming in via, you know, having an ambulance. Do you guys take care of the transport, or is that, how is that handled? Is that a third party or?
Yeah, we typically coordinate with the hospital for transport, and then we can have our, we can have the hospital send an ambulance with the person over, or depending on how they need to be transferred, we can send a car over and get the person from the hospital.
Okay, so it's not always an ambulance?
No, no, not always.
It could just be you guys have transport that you can help with?
Yes, we, we hire drivers on staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So the number of beds that you have, you have 96 beds, how many of those are certified for long-term care and how many are certified for short-term care?
So all the beds will be dual-certified for Medicare and Medicaid. Typically Medicare, Medicaid is, is longer term. The model that we run is mostly short-term, but we will have some long-term population as well, but they will all be dual-certified for everything.
Do you, are you JCO or was it, is it JCO?
Yeah, no, we, we, we eventually will be pursuing it. We need to be in operation for a certain amount of time before we can be JCO accredited, but yes, we will eventually be pursuing it.
Okay. Are any of your other facilities JCO accredited?
The ones in Illinois, I believe, it says certain states look for it more than others. I know, depends on insurance contracts as well. I know Blue Cross would like us to do it, so our Illinois facilities, I believe all of them are, but some are and some aren't. It's, most of the certification that we go through, or all the certification rather, is through the various states that we operate in, so the Illinois Department of Health, the Illinois Department of Public Health oversees everything that we do, and then we can go to JCO certification on top of that as well.
Alderman Back has her hand up.
Oh, Abby.
This is a question more for staff. On the point of the, the parking relief, when we set those parking policies, I know there was some discussion about allowing for trade-offs if we were going to do, if somebody wanted more parking, we could allow that if they did X, Y, and Z, if it was permeable pavers, or if it was extra green infrastructure, other stormwater management. And so I have a hard time approving variances until we have some sort of policy in place because that policy is not necessarily strong enough as it is, and I don't want to see more paved-over surfaces in our town unless we're making allowances for that stormwater and other places.
Sure. Yeah, so right now in the zoning code, we just have the maximum. It, you know, it is typically by way of conditional use, so that could be additional conditions that could be imposed. We did not recommend any particular requirements as, as a trade-off of that, but there would be the, you know, if there was a request to add some of that, that, by way of the, you know, the plan development process, that's certainly something that could be a request or a condition if, if that was consensus of the council.
And just, Abby, great question. I'd just like to jump in. So the R4 zoning district is, you know, we're not a perfect fit in, in, in the zoning district, but that happens to be where, where, where we fit in the zoning code. The additional parking spaces that were requested really is to, is a competitive advantage for, for the operator here. This facility really focuses in on trying to get more, trying to have family involvement in the rehabilitation process. That's one of the reasons why the rehabilitation center is five times larger than what you'd see in traditional area there. So the, the parking that is requested is to provide additional and convenient parking spaces near the therapy area. In addition, as, as was earlier mentioned, you know, they have full-time staff, they're not, not, not contract employees who come in and go, full-time staff who work on shifts, who are part of that, that therapy process. So is it really particularly to the additional parking spaces? It's, it's mostly for that, but then also in regards to our overall site, and we can bring Joe, our civil engineer, up, but we are, I think, far, we are, we have far more green space, I believe, than what is traditionally required for the site, our size. And so I just wanted to make mention of that and bring Joe up from Kimley Horn.
Yeah, I think we can all agree that the intent is not to put too much pavement in and, you know, just exactly what this operation needs. Currently, the site is maintaining a 45% green space ratio, and a lot of that is centered around preserving some of the mature growth that's on-site, some of the existing natural features, you know, going above and beyond perimeter setbacks, screening the parking lot where possible. And so I think we're confident on our end that we're presenting a parking lot and product that is minimal in nature, but still fits the needs of the business.
If I may, I want to note one other thing. One of the parts that is, part of the discussion that we've had is that the city actually owns the detention pond at the southwest corner of this property. We've had discussions with them about acquiring that because that is something the city is maintaining right now. So if that is sold to these folks and they maintain that, that would be additional open space that would be part of their development, and city would no longer need to maintain.
How many parking spaces are they ask, are they asking for in this plan? I tried counting them, but...
I believe it was 106, yeah. So the zoning requirement for nursing care is half a bed per, per dwelling unit, or per, per bed, excuse me. So that equates to, I believe it was 40, 48, thank you. Just don't try to do math on my head, top of my head here, but I want to bring up, Austin did mention the amount of green space. The code requires 15% green space. They're about 46%, so it is a pre-green site. The other, one other amendment that Scott did mention that I did want to bring up, the, there is the, the fact that they are preserving a number of trees. They did, based on a request, do a tree preservation study of the site. They are preserving a number of larger quality trees on the site, and they did try and design their site to accommodate that, so that was one aspect. One other item that did come up during the public hearing process was the, the applicant did note that in part, the parking is kind of divided out on the site. It's not designed all to be up front, removing some of those trees, but then also from an accessibility ADA standpoint, they are trying to stop, put parking closer to the building in certain circumstances to provide basically the ability to quickly go in and out. circumstances to provide basically the ability to quickly go in and out, to get to a vehicle as well.
I have an operations question. So, let's say you're at full capacity, can you kind of tell the council, like, how many nurses and staff members you'd have to have on hand just to accommodate that for my DPH regulations?
Yeah, sure, so, we, we like to exceed the, you know, the regulations of what the state requires us to provide, so, off the top of my head, I believe it's 2.2, I apologize, but, you know, I'll just give you some numbers, so if we, you know, have 96 beds, you know, we would easily have, you know, four to five, to even six nurses on staff on any given day, and then a similar amount of CNAs.
And then, as part of support staff, obviously, you have a kitchen that you have to provide food, and then also all of your therapy personnel, like, I'm just trying to understand as far as, like, the parking spots, you know, with the number that are being requested, you know, is, the number of people that could potentially be needed in the building at that time, but then also the changeover, because it's not like you end one shift and you start a new shift, you have to have that conversation of passing of the information?
Yeah, and that's a good point, and then also, what we were mentioning as well, is a lot of the parking spaces would be, you know, geared towards families being able to visit as well, so, you know, if you have a guest, let's say his name's John Smith, John Smith is a, we call him guest instead of resident, but a typical term would be resident, so if John Smith is staying with us and his wife wants to visit, she's driving, his daughter wants to visit, she's driving, and the son wants to visit, they're driving as well, there's no, you know, there's no reason there couldn't be three or four cars to visit one person on any given day, and what we also do is encourage people to come for therapy and watch their loved ones, too, in the gym, and encourage them. There have been a lot of studies that show that having your family around can actually push you further during, during therapy, which is awesome for us to see, we love having families there, and it just creates a lot of visitors during the daytime. Now, certainly at 3:00 in the morning, the parking lot will be, you know, mostly empty, but during the day, these parking lots are absolutely packed, and our facility is of similar size with the same amount of parking spots. Sorry, did you want to?
So, saying there could be...
Did you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Barry Carr, I'm also with Ignite. At any given time, there could be 60 staff members in the building, so, that's usually during the day, at night, like Jared was just saying, it, it tends to slow down a bit, because you don't have the dietary staff, though you don't have as many housekeepers, et cetera, so some, some of the support staff drops down, but there could be 60 staff members and with possibly 60 cars during, during a day shift.
Ian?
I have a question. Knowing that, road is this Deer Path, is we have an issue of speeding up and down this road currently right now, I see they're putting in some sidewalks, this is great, it's going to connect to their sidewalks on Main, they got one that's heading out into the street, are we looking at, are we looking at putting a crosswalk across there with some sort of system, or having them do it, as we're trying to get kids from the west side of Deer Path Road back over because of the non-connectivity on the west side of Deer Path?
I believe with the intersection improvements we did, there is actually a pedestrian crossing on Deer Path at Main Street, I don't believe there was any proposal to have a mid-block crossing as part of this project.
I believe the crossing, though, is on the west side, the west leg, that would connect to the sidewalk into the subdivision that would then be the route to school.
The one that, the one that dies just before they're, just right at their site, on the other side of Deer Path, uh, sorry, 27?
If I may, my name's Joe Mayer with Kimley Horn, we're the civil engineer. We are working with staff on the most appropriate pedestrian paths, the developer has certainly agreed to extending the sidewalk up Deer Path Road. Our current site plan does show a mid-block west connection across Deer Path, we misinterpreted a comment from staff and have agreed to address it as part of our final engineering plans to, I believe, remove that cross-access point, or provide it, we're okay with either, whatever is the, you know, safest approach, or if there is some signage that's needed if a cross-access is required, but currently, it's, you know, we're willing to work with staff to make sure it's appropriate.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Sarah?
One quick question, thank you for addressing the sidewalks, Alderman Miller. How often, it looks like the driveways for deliveries will be kind of bordering where residents are currently living, how frequently will deliveries be made? Is the fence now high enough to make the impact on their current lives as minimal as possible?
Speaking to the deliveries, we have deliveries maybe once to twice a week of, of food and medical supplies.
With that many beds, just once or twice a week?
I'm sorry?
With that many beds, you just have deliveries once or twice a week?
Yes, and a lot of the medication deliveries are done, I don't want to say privately, but it's a, it's a small car that goes to the front, as opposed to a box truck that would be going around the back, and smaller deliveries like that would just come right through the front, but the major deliveries of medical equipment and food that you're thinking of would be once to twice a week, yeah.
Where are your guests, I guess, guests delivered at when they come from the hospital? Is that the way?
Yeah, right through the front door, so...
Okay, through the front door.
And we certainly could pull up the slides, but one of the, the design we have is a beautiful portage under the front, so that when you're coming in, it feels like you're at a valet at a hotel, I mean, nobody wants to feel like they're entering a medical facility, especially once they've, you know, been in the hospital, and, and, you know, as beautiful as we are, the reality is that people don't want to be there, they want to be home, so we want to make it as nice as they possibly can, and we have a beautiful lobby with a Starbucks cafe in it, and it's a very nice experience coming into the front.
Being delivered at the same time, many, many years ago.
Any else?
I don't know, it might be helpful to show a couple of slides, so people who are watching online can see the concept of what it looks like. Not, not a massive slideshow like Alderman. Yeah, a couple of representative photos.
I just wonder if they're conceptual.
So, without going through a, a lot of the slides, we'll kind of just jump to the last question. Here's a great rendering of the portage share, so this is the area where the guests will, will come, and then the families will be able to come to interact and, and visit their loved one as they're, you know, recovering on their, on their journey towards better health and, and being able to, to get home. And then the interesting thing is, one of the things I like about this second rendering, kind of on the lower areas, it gives you an idea of the, the guest lobby as well, for that experience, but then, this is also the physical therapy area, again, about five times larger than the, than the average one, and if you have time, go on Ignite's website and, and take a look at some of the technology that they bring to their physical, and their rehabilitation, it's, it's incredible. I mean, state of the art, cutting-edge technology, where they help people who go through, you know, traumatic situations in their lives be able to not only walk again, but to use their, use their hands, use their legs, be able to cook, clean daily chores, and, and live. Their goal is to get the people who come to this facility back to being productive members of their families and their communities, so I like this because it really highlights the, the large, you know, physical therapy area, which again is off to the front, and as Jared had mentioned, you know, the, the goal of this organization is to bring the families in and have the families be part of the recovery journey.
Any further questions or further discussion? Is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak on this? Okay. In that case, I mean, would someone like to make a motion on, we've got a million of them here, hold on a second, let me pull up the right one.
Alderman Back has her hand up.
Yeah, Mark, I'll just, I'm going to go back to the comment that I made, Austin team, it looks lovely, but if there are still times for the, for some arrangement to be made for the extra parking spaces, then you have my vote, but otherwise, I'll be voting no.
Austin, did you, do you guys have any thoughts on that?
Alderman Back, could you, could you say that again? There was a little bit of feedback, or, or my, I just didn't hear you, sorry, could you just say that one more time?
Sure, I, I really just want to push us as a city to have a stronger policy in place about parking allowances and the parking standards that we put on our books, and that if folks want to deviate or increase those paved parking areas, above and beyond what our code says, that we require something as a trade-off.
I appreciate, I appreciate the position and agree, having a strong policy in, in regards to, to parking and available to parking, as important as all of us know, you know, parking around this community is, is, is important. I, I guess the, the trade-off that we've kind of offered is, the code calls for a 15% green space, we're, I think, 42 or 47%, 46% as far as green space. At the city staff's request, which was a great idea, we hired an arborist to go in and do a tree inventory of all the trees that were on the site in order to preserve the best quality, non-invasive species trees, and we've submitted that as part of the plan. In addition, you know, we've doubled the, at least doubled plus the setbacks and the landscape buffer areas, basically across the entire perimeter of the site, so that we're providing at least double the amount of landscaping and setback from the, the neighbors, you know, are, while I don't, I wasn't part of the discussions about creating a parking ordinance that, that affects this site, we've got an operator here that I think looks at what they're going to deliver and the, and the way that they deliver that product, and the conditions that we've already done, and we feel like we're bringing forward a really strong development for the community that is very respectful in the way that we park it.
Yeah, and I guess, Abby, I would, I guess my question would be for you, in something like this, I could see if they were, you know, stretching the limits of everything, that we would be asking for additional green space or something like that, what, if there was a policy, what, would the additional green space be something that would be something that you would put in that policy to say, well, if you're going to expand the parking, then you have to have 10% more green space, or something like that, I mean, because there are things, part of this, that this isn't like a, this isn't a Walmart parking lot, that we would want a lot more islands in, or something like that.
We have a very nice Walmart parking lot with a lot of trees.
The other thing to take into consideration, and thanks, Mark, for bringing that up, and, you know, trying to balance what Abby's concern is, a lot of times when people are in rehab, one thing that helps them is getting out and having a good area to be able to have your wheelchair pushed on, and with having the surrounding landscape and being able to get out there with your loved ones and enjoy it, it does need to be safe and easy for the families to be able to push the guests out into the area.
If I could just add two things with the parking, in this particular situation, we don't have any availability for on, for off, on-street parking, given the two streets, so if there is a parking demand issue on this property, it would have to be fulfilled on this property. The other thing, I did check the most recent comparable project, which was Windmill Landing, or the Landings, they were not subject to this particular regulation, it was a slightly different type of project, because there were some apartments as well, but they, they were over the required parking at about 135%. This proposal is a little bit higher, but it was, you know, if you want to see a comparable situation, or a somewhat similar situation, that particular application would have required parking, that similar type of parking relief, if it was considered today.
Go ahead, Abby.
A question for Austin, then, and with the remaining space that you have on this lot, there won't be any other developments proposed?
Uh, no, there'll be no other developments that are, that are being proposed, and I, in, you know, I might also just jump to the site plan, because this may be, this may be impactful to the discussion, and I see our civil engineer walking up directly behind me, he's probably going to talk about, on the, some, some of the physical site constraints, but Alderman, to your, to your question, to your point perfectly, I mean, there's two, there's an internal self-contained courtyard for that rehabilitation area that is a green space, plus there's kind of, in, in the north side of the building, there's an additional green space. The way that this is, the way that the parking is orientated, and Drew made a good point about this earlier, is we wanted to be able to provide, you know, convenient parking for, for the families and, and the staff without having the proverbial sea of parking, even though it's a beautiful Walmart parking lot, we, we didn't want to have a very similar experience here. So, Joe, I don't know if you wanted to add some stuff?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just note that obviously the rest of the green space has a use, and it's, whether it's the stormwater management, the significant storm management improvements on the west side of the property, or our landscape setbacks, or the usable courtyards, and, and, you know, other easements that are associated with the green space that, I don't, you know, there's not really a, a risk for, for additional, or really a need for any more impervious area out here, I think it's, and something that we're working with staff to make sure that we're optimizing the site layout, but happy to answer any other questions as it comes to parking.
Can I ask a quick follow-up on the detention areas that you have shown? Are those just going to be sodded over, or will those be naturalized?
The intent is, at this time, to do just, like, native grasses, dry detention, though, with the exception that we still need to work with staff for final approval, and in the event that the stormwater management ordinance requires them to be naturalized, the developer has no issue with doing so. The existing basin is dry.
Follow-up question on that, then, so, it's semantics, if it's required, you have no problem, if we asked?
The, there is a maintenance obligation that comes with a naturalized basin as well to be conscious of, and in the event, you know, and our personal recommendation is a dried basin may function better, especially given that if you do, like, low-level plantings, really, it may need to be like a full wet pond to establish well, so our, our recommendation is to keep it as a, a dry pond, at least my professional recommendation, but open to staff feedback.
Scott and Drew, I'm assuming that it is not required, and, or is there a circumstance in which it is required to do a naturalized basin?
Another question I probably would defer to Rod or engineering specifically on, but...
At this time, we follow the Kane County stormwater ordinance, and Kane County doesn't require it to be nat, naturalized. Obviously, you can see a naturalized basin that we put in along Cock Road, looks very beautiful, you know, but, but as the engineer said, it comes with a maintenance responsibility, so.
I thought Kane County stormwater ordinance required that it was naturalized, or at least in some cases, that they're naturalized.
They, they require that you just have one inches of rain to be retained, but it doesn't require it to be naturalized.
So, Abby, just back to your original question about the parking, and my question's about what is the balance here, is, I agree there should be a policy, but would some of the things you're doing meet your requirements for a policy?
Um, yes, probably, but, yeah, if I can get a commitment that will, that we will set a policy... But yeah, if I can get a commitment that will, that we will set a policy for future developments, then since this one doesn't fall under that timeframe, then sure. But I definitely think we need to have that conversation.
I'll join Abby.
Perfect.
I'm not sure if you're familiar with the arboretum at the high school. It's not very big, but you have enough trees for sizzle. I think I would have called that an arboretum in the front. And you might've gotten unanimous, but a little faster. You're good at sizzle, so. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Based on that, I will recommend approval of, moving forward to city council approval of ordinance 23-30 amendment to comprehensive plan land use map.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion then on ordinance that we moved to city council ordinance 23-31 amendment to the official zoning map to rezone property to the R4 multiple-family residential medium-density district and to add a planned development overlay district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to propose we move ordinance 23-32 to city council, conditional use permit for a nursing home in an R4 multiple-family residential medium-density district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, I would like to move, approve resolution 23-088-R approving the preliminary final plat of Deer Path and Main consolidation subdivision. Preliminary and final 2349 Main Street and 2399 Main Street, City of Batavia. 2349 formerly 38 West 284 Main Street and Kimley Horn. So is that, is that the same one? We're still, and applicant.
Second.
Getting very confused. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then for clarification, the applicant asked if this could appear on consent. They do have their team coming from several states, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be on consent, it was unanimous, so.
Thank you. All right then. Moving on then to item number 10, this approval of permit processing analysis study and permit fee analysis.
Scott, I'll just turn this over to you.
Thank you. We had, after a lot of discussion with the committee, the whole received a proposal for a permit study as well as a fee study. And through HR Green. The fee for the study would be $35,000 and then the permit fee study would be an additional $10,000, so $45,000 total. So the resolutions in front of you has, has that contract for consideration. What we wanted to raise with the committee was Laura and I and HR and finance had some discussions about this as well as internal discussions with community development. And what we anticipate is that the study is going to tell us that, you know, we don't have enough staff to handle the volume of permits that we're getting. And that seems to be the biggest issue that we're having. We have really two pinch points that are occurring right now with, with permits. One is the processing the permits on the front end with actually intake of permits. And second is the plan review and issuance of the permits from the plan reviews. We have two clerical people we have that are in place right now. One of the, one of them was, is brand new. We had a period of time for several months where we were hiring a temporary person from HR Green to help us out with that. It did help, but it, you know, didn't, you know, resolve the backlog. So we find that that's really one of the things that we have right now is, is a backlog at that front end. I know one of the things people are going to say is, well, technology will take care of some of that stuff. It is helping. We do have a number of permits that are electronic and they're, that, you know, people can submit. And that does take care of a lot of the data input issues that we have because then the clerical people don't have to do that. The applicants do that online. That doesn't resolve all of it and we don't allow for all permits to be online. We're working on that. It's a, it's a technological thing with IT as well as, you know, trying to get it into the permitting systems and everything else. We are working at it. We're trying to put more permits online that way and that will certainly help. But what we don't see is that that's going to end up being a long-term solution. We think that another person in that position will help. In addition, if we have some other programs that we're talking about, we've been talking about, you know, rental inspection programs, expanding that. We've talked about business registration, other things that are relation to those things. Those are things that we would have some additional clerical needs for as well. So we could see that not just the permitting, but some other things that when, when times are slow, that they'd be able to help out with those types of things. The plan review, we have one plan reviewer that does all the plan reviews and inspections. And Jeff, Jeff Albertson does help out and he does distribution on those types of things too. But when Joe is gone, Jeff is the person doing it. We do have the code enforcement people that do some of the simpler code enforcement or, or plan reviews with inspections and certain types of things like decks and sheds and things like that that are relatively simple. But, you know, because of the volume of permits that we get, that doesn't address at all. So what we're looking at is that, you know, we really would need to have another code or a plan reviewer inspector who would be able to help out with those types of things. Because Jeff, unfortunately, with the number of staff people we have, plays seven different roles and unfortunately he can't do some of the bigger policy matters and the bigger picture things because he's involved in the day-to-day of, you know, sometimes sitting at the front counter and dealing with front counter and things like that. So, so that's, so what we're looking at is that, you know, we could certainly do this permit study if, if that's what the council wants to do. But ultimately, we think the study is going to tell us, we need some additional personnel to address the issues here. So we haven't presented any numbers to you, obviously, or anything like that. So we would have to go back and talk about, you know, what, what that would actually cost. But we think that that's probably the better solution for us is to, you know, get a couple of additional staff persons in place to help out. We think that, you know, based on the volume of permits that we're having, the fact that we're getting all these new homes with Prairie Commons and Winding Creek and Toll Brothers, you know, and some of the other commercial things that are happening with, you know, new, new things moving in, that we're actually seeing quite a level of activity, that there will be things for people to do. We don't see this as being a situation where all of a sudden, you know, this is going to be a glut and then, you know, they're going to be sitting all winter doing absolutely nothing, so.
We're, we're back to levels pre-COVID, we're back to those pre-housing burst bowl. This is definitely something for committee to discuss. Hiring another staff person should not be a dirty word. You guys shouldn't be afraid to ask for another person when you, when you need somebody. And in general, we don't get requests for new employees unless it's absolutely needed. We needed one a year ago, probably.
Probably.
So part of that is our fault.
Part of it's my fault not for asking too, because we've been trying to be physically responsible.
We've also created an environment where it is adversarial sometimes when senior staff asks for another employee. And that is something for us to discuss at committee as well.
Just to add on to what Scott has said. You know, I know that this isn't the only thing that, that needs to be done. So we need more staff in order to shorten that permit process where people are feeling that it's abnormally long. But we also have a situation and have received feedback that the process itself is not clear to those who are using it. But, you know, mapping the process and, and creating a visual representation for those who need to use that process, clear guidelines to follow. I feel like we have staff members who could handle a project like that. Max with his skills would be very adept at studying the process and then creating explanations and working with Lori Botterman to then put those things online so that people could research those things themselves without having to rely so much upon contacting a staff member who then would need to walk them through something that really, you know, the simpler things should be available online. And to put people on notice of what things actually require a permit and what, what don't.
Tony?
Yeah, just speaking of adding staff, we just did this with IT and Howard's memo. He talked about, it wasn't until 2019 that we got back to the staffing levels of 2008. How, how about your staff that handles this permitting? Is that, are they back to, are we back to that level or are we still be, still short or? When did we get back to that level?
I'll let Jeff comment, the guy wasn't here, so.
Yeah.
At least one.
We're, we're generally pretty close to, back to that level. I think what you're finding now is, is the projects that we're involved in right now are a lot more complex. The codes are a lot more complex. The time we have to spend with them is a lot more complex than it used to be prior to, you know, prior to the, the 2008 crash, I guess, or, you know, when we, when we were busy. I mean, we're, we're definitely back to those levels prior to that as far as workload and then some.
And do you think staff is, be back to the staffing level or?
We're close, yeah. I mean, we're really close to that level.
Not exceeding it, but not, not too far behind, but.
No.
One of the things I recall when I worked in another community and I was speaking with my counterparts here, my predecessors, was, you know, one community I was in, we were doing, you know, 200-some single-family homes every year. And that was what our permits were, or 500, depending on which community I was in. Here we were doing like four, you know, and so then there wasn't as much activity. Here we're doing a lot more. We've, we've probably done about 30 just for Winding Creek alone this year. You know, and then wrapping up the ones in Prairie Commons and other things that we have. And then, you know, obviously there's miscellaneous parts for people doing rehabs and additions and things like that, so. But we didn't have a lot of new, new permit volume for new homes.
For that decade there, wow.
Exactly, right, pre-recession.
And when I first came on board, we had one huge project that we were looking at, right? And so we didn't necessarily want to suggest adding to staff just because we had one large project. But now we have seen over the last several years sustained high levels of development throughout the community, whether they be industrial, commercial. The, you know, the residential permits alone last month were 238. It's pretty staggering.
I spent half of my service here not having anything on the community development agenda for com meetings. And the fact that we're having so many approvals, I would definitely expect that you would, you would need to look at another employee here. I remember when Alderman Brown would announce a number of permits every, every meeting. As a recap, as a cheerleader for Batavia, we might need to bring that back and talk about how many different projects we're working on. I just put things in perspective.
Yeah, I'll weigh in. We've had a lot of permits online since Alderman Brown's been here. One of the things that you bring up that concerns me is, is the complexities of it. So that kind of tells me, okay, what, what can we be doing different? I kind of brought this to the forefront, not as a witch hunt, but I've been here over 10 years. The perception out there of business unfriendliness keeps rising to the top. I know you guys bust your tail and we can get another person in here. If, if that's the answer, why I thought about going to a consultant is the success we had in the fire department. And if you think about it, we brought in a consultant, they came back to us and it streamlined getting a new, we got, we approved over a $200,000 package to get another person in because there was a clear path. There was an unbiased third party that came in and said, hey, we can do this. It, it leads to the better legacy planning, training, all kinds of things. So that's, that success is what put in my head, like, let's go through this. There seems to be, you know, pushback and some defensiveness that maybe this is a witch hunt and maybe because I bring up business unfriendliness, there's a negative connotation. It's not, I just am looking at this to say, hey, what can we do to improve this process? So I hear and I, I still, you know, will hear, I will never do business in Batavia again. But I'll also say, I was in a business last week and they said, it's been great. So I should give more kudos because I don't want this to come across as a negative thing. I want to look at how do we get to the top level and where everyone is talking that, yeah, let's go to Batavia. And we already have a lot of activity. So I know you guys are doing the right things, but that was the motivation between me doing this and pushing this.
We don't think we think it's a witch hunt.
No, it's not. No, we totally understand why, why the request was there.
From the beginning.
Right.
It's about the process.
And, and I think one of the things that would happen too, when we think about it, you know, we brought on Anthony, you know, and he's kind of our ombudsman for things that when, when things are going wrong, you know, he intervenes and he, you know, jumps in and tries to, you know, address situations and say, hey, can we move this permit along or what's going on with this? And, you know, keep the communication, the lines of communication open. So that's part of it. But also, you know, if Jeff is freed up for doing other things, he can do the bigger, you know, higher level things where he's not doing the day-to-day in the trenches stuff. And he can start looking at the process and saying, okay, what can we do to speed it up? Or what's, what's some of the, the speed bumps in the process that we can do to make improvements on? You know, because right now, not a lot of people are quite aware and we're work, that's one of the things we wanted to work on is the process, you know, flow chart and everything else. But, you know, we have a lot of divisions that have to review every part, most permits, not every permit, but most permits. So we have a lot of public works divisions, we have fire, we have police, a lot of times they all have to review that. And, you know, my department is the face of, of the permitting. And, you know, we get blamed for, you know, oh, I can't believe my permit. But, you know, it's not always us that's creating that delay. I mean, there are other things, other divisions that have to review things or other processes and things that have to be done as part of that. And so that creates a delay, but it looks like it's our fault that we're delaying things, so.
With that, along those lines and just to bring it full circle. This is just discussion, so I know we're not acting on anything tonight, right?
Resolution. Well, there's a resolution to approve the consultant.
Oh, so along those lines, I wouldn't, I agree and disagree. I would not approve this, this consultant because this is a, as we discussed last time, I think we need truly somebody who's not involved in the city. They have a master service agreement with us. There, there seems to be a natural conflict with that. I would, I would support bringing in a consultant that has nothing to do with the city. And I don't know, it's been, we've been doing a lot of trial and error, bringing on somebody, we can, we can do that and see if it works. But I still think there's advantage to getting fresh eyes, unbiased eyes and going in that direction. So I'll say that, and I know Chris wanted to add it.
I've kind of been against this from the beginning. I don't see any reason to have unbudgeted money go for something where I haven't heard a single specific instance of a actual complaint that we can attribute to something other than real amorphous things about Batavia being not business friendly. I don't have any specifics that I'm going to spend $45,000 on. And it says right in here that there were, they did put out an RFP and nobody responded. Nobody wants to do it anyway. So I think that Scott's already said, what they can, they're already doing self-examination. They're already looking at solutions. Especially with, you know, the description of, you know, a how-to guide online. That'd be great, you know, I mean, something that's nice and easy. Even print it up if you want to, but, and then, you know, maybe looking into if, if we want to have another staff member. But I think this is a colossal waste of money and waste of time. When I have absolutely no idea who's complaining about anything.
Well, we started, the last time we talked, the path was we were going to open up a way people can give feedback. And I know we haven't gone that, down that path. I am happy to have a discussion with you offline of some of the things that I've heard that have been told to me in confidence.
That's fine, it just sounds like a lot of sour grapes.
No doubt. You know, you've got to, you've got to weigh that, but that doesn't mean you don't listen to them.
Sounds like it's working real well for the most part, though.
Alan, go ahead.
Who?
Alan, did you have something to say?
Nope. No. I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Hannah's in it first.
I've heard both sides, been on both sides of the, of the argument in, in my head. I think the MSA is actually the compromise. Bringing in a third party who knows nothing about Batavia. Well, I see where, where you're coming from. MSA doesn't necessarily mean in bed with potato, it means vetted by Batavia. We reject people who have MSA. We reject people who have MSA all the time for internal work. I don't think staff necessarily wants to go through a process like this where, where it's, 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 it's a lot of work looking at yourself, but also it is part of your job looking at yourself. And so I agree that that's our, our point here is to set a policy and a procedure to make sure that we are doing the very best that we can do. I actually would feel more comfortable with someone who knows a little bit more about Batavia to go through this process if we were to go through something like this, because I do believe that we're throwing money at what I think they already have the answer for. I would feel more comfortable having the guide to get us to how many people we need to hire or where the places that are broken in the process, as someone who's a little bit familiar with how to drive this car. That's why I feel better with, with an assay. And so that's why I think I see consensus between the two of you, where we could move forward if we had to. I also like the direction where we're headed now, because it sounds like staff has spent a lot of time soul-searching and has already identified a lot of places where you could make major improvements. And we have not given you enough time. We just talked about getting an IT person in here a couple of meetings ago. We've been talking about automating permits for quite a while, multiple years, and we're just now hiring the person that can do that. Part of that's not fair. I, I, I would have set myself up for failure if I was in his role in this case. And I would look terrible if you made me give you a report and show you how many permits I didn't approve, that I could have approved it, I had a process in place, I had the people in place. I would say we should do this if we're going to do it. It should be with an MSA-vetted company that we work with, and I would feel comfortable then and only then.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. Are we currently updating our codes also? Is that something that's happening?
Yes, that's in process.
If you mean our online codes that people could refer to changes that we've made?
Are we updating them, so?
Building code?
Yeah.
Yes, that, that is, we have, it's been a multi-year process because of the complexity of those codes. That is getting near completion and we anticipate that that'll be in front of you in the next few months, once we prepare the final ordinances and everything. But we've spent a number of months between building and fire to review them and vet them out and make sure that they have all the local amendments we normally would require, so that, that is, process is almost done.
And I agree a lot with what Nick had to say, that I think it's good to have an outside opinion to help just reflect on how your organization is running. I mean, we do that. I think the city does that often with a lot of different things, where you bring in outside council to help make, to reflect on what your, your processes are or your financials are. And I, I don't view it being that different than even what we do with our financial department, having people come in and outside looking at it. So in my opinion, I, I don't see this as a bad thing, and actually, the money is not that significant, especially if you, when you consider it compared to how much we just play, pay a single employee a year to, to work in a department. You know, this is a very minimal amount to, that has the potential to have many, many years of benefit for your department and for the city. And if they can just come in and say, hey, you know, you can streamline this, this and this and this, and here's how you can change these permitting things, you know, and my hope would be, in the moment, working with the company, I can see that that would be very stressful and I'm glad we didn't put that on you over the summer. I am very glad that, you know, that that didn't happen. As we come out of summer into the slower months, I can see this being a really good time for this. But my hope would be you would come out the other end and you would say, oh my gosh, I'm so glad we did that, because our jobs are so much easier now. And I completely support also another staff person for your department. I think that is one of the most important aspects of a company and a business running well, is being staffed well. HR Green, can you remind me what else they do for the city or have done?
We use them as contract inspection on projects where it is a, a large number of very similar things that they would be reviewing, such as the landings, right?
Yeah, we haven't, I wouldn't really say that they are a large contributor to daily work for us. We've really used them on two actual projects, the landings and the holiday project. We did hire their clerical person during our summer lull or summer absence, I should say, not lull, I wish I had a lull. But we used, we used a clerical person from them during that period of time, and that individual actually would have been one of the people that is part of this study to, you know, look at the processes and stuff, so that person is, is familiar with some of the things that we do, because she's kind of been in the trenches a little bit, so.
I think the conflict of interest that perhaps Alderman Saron is thinking of is if HR Green came back and said, ooh, we see these things that are, that feel very concerning to us while also working with you on these other projects.
Right.
That's going to be very difficult for them to do, honestly. And so I would love to put out another RFP if possible. I mean, put it out farther. I don't think this necessarily has to be local. It wasn't a local person we brought in for the fire department. That was, it was a local, okay.
Local? It was down south?
Local-ish. So, so it might be looked upon positively by the department, as you were saying, that if they're identifying efficiencies in the process that make the, the process easier for the employees here, that would reflect positively on HR Green for discovering those things.
Exactly. So you print on the audit? We've had this for the last 10 years.
Yeah.
And they actually very intimately know us. That's why we've won that award for 10 years, 15 years running.
And part of the problem is that there, there is a very, very limited pool of entities that can do this kind of an analysis. We've reached out to the other two that we know of in the area. You know, if we're going to start reaching out to further from, further beyond, we're talking about, you know, going to Texas and California and saying, hey, fly in here to look at our building department.
And then we have to pay for their cost of travel.
Absolutely, yep. So it's not going, it's going to be more than that.
And they'll fly first class.
What about that?
Do we know why the other two didn't respond to our RFP?
You know, the only thing I can think of is that, you know, when we made the request, it was, you know, middle of summer and it's, it's, it's really not a thing that they really want to do. It's, it's something that they just, you know, it's, it's, you know, if, if things were slow and they had extra staff to do it, that might, they might jump into it, but it's really, you know, they'd rather do building inspections and plan reviews, that's, that's really their balaic, you know?
Sarah?
I am, I understand both sides of the equation. I feel more in line with what Alderman Saron brought up about a fresh set of eyes and just if it's people you work with in different capacities, like an auditor doesn't audit, that's different than this, where you might be working alongside. I can see how it would be difficult to give honest feedback. I do think honest feedback could be valuable. It sounds like some things are being addressed. Could we possibly, I don't know, if we want to table the consultant for a little while, put out the RFP at a more desirable time for those other companies to maybe throw their hat in the ring? I don't know what the next step would be, but I'm in favor of finding more information and also seeing what results we see from what you've already put in place and what you're currently doing.
If we were to wait to do a review, would we still look at adding additional staff ahead of that? Or would we wait for the review?
It's an immediate need.
Okay.
I'm, you know, sorry to be coming to mid-year to suggest it, but raising this issue has forced an examination of the process, and Scott identified what the pinch points were, and, you know, we absolutely wanted to wait until we saw that it was a sustainable level because we don't want to bring somebody onboard only to say, oh, this was just something that was a blip. We see this as going many years into the future projects.
I, I mean, a couple of things that I would point on. I mean, the first thing that struck me was, was the complexity. I want to understand that more as, as a newer member of council. I mean, maybe just more detail, what's more complex? Why is it more complex? Usually complex means longer and can lead to issues. So if there's any way to, you know, fix up some of that, obviously, you know, that's, that's what we want to do. But I, I will say, first and foremost, I, I personally never want to get in the way of, of staff adding another member if we absolutely need it, you know? In terms of the IT staff member, you know, things might be taken out of context. That was a symbolic vote no for, for the record. You know, it wasn't to say that we didn't need a staff member. I think I made it clear that, that we did, or I thought we did. So that being said, I think, you know, I'll, I'll double down on, on what some of the other aldermen have said in terms of, you know, these are good problems to have. We need to quit thinking of this as a bad thing, and especially if this is sustained, these are fantastic problems to have. So in my mind, if this is going to be sustained and even hopefully up a notch, maybe it is time, you know, to get that fresh set of eyes. Maybe not. I'm just throwing it out there, you know? That, that's, that's a time where, hey, we're at the ground level, we're about to blow up, you know? Let's make sure we have our ducks in a row as we're, as we're, you know, ascending that ladder. So, you know, I just want to throw that out there and, you know, just not look at it as, as a bad thing. These are great, great problems to have for our town, so.
I'm looking at, looking at this $45,000 unbudgeted to possibly get an answer that you need more staff. When I'm hearing you say that we think we have identified we need more staff, you know, the, the timing of this, they wouldn't start till about September 1, I believe, that's going into the fall, that's probably going into a slower time, you know? How effective are they going to be in, in, you know, doing a study at that time of the year? Not seeing the, the heavy workload, heavier, heaviest workload. You know, we could, if, if we did go and, and hire this consultant and, and, you know, obviously, I think we need, we're going to need more staff. I think we're spending all too much right, right at once. Let's try the staff and see if that helps us out some and save that $45,000, it might take.
That could be the fresh eyes that are needed.
I'm, yeah, I agree with that 100%. Or, or, you know, if that's, if that's a decision of the committee, but I think, you know, let's take, you know, the consultant language as, as bad language out of our mouths too, because it, you know, some of us have alluded to it, these are really good third-party eyes, that this is all they do is concentrate on that core competency, what we're asking them to do. So it's just good to listen sometimes, and you don't have to take all their advice. They're there to consult, you know, not dictate, so.
I'm saying let's not spend the 45 grand, let's hire someone and see if we don't have to spend the 45 grand.
I'm saying in the future.
Yeah, I mean, one, one thing.
That this is what they actually really do all the time anyway. This is not what they do. Scott just said that. I mean, so in terms of this particular area, I'm, all right. I'm voting no against any possible consultant anyway whatsoever, so that's all I got to say about this.
We have, if we hire a staff person or two staff people to do this and we find that we're still having problems, you know, you're, you're definitely going to want to have a study done or, or, you know, have some real analysis of what's going on.
And in the meantime, we can internally analyze the process and create those guidebooks for, for folks and, and see what the impact of that is, too.
Exactly.
Yeah, I guess I would ask, like, let me, two parts here. One, I think we should bring in, in the consultant, because you're, we're likely to learn something. And if we learn that everything we're doing is perfect, then, then I'll be the first to pat you guys on the back, say, awesome, you guys are like following everything exactly how somebody says you should do it, and there's no improvements to be made. In any line of business, I find that to be highly unlikely that somebody is perfect at what they do. So there's going to be an advantage, something is going to come out of this that is, that is going to be beneficial, and that's why I'm in favor of doing it. And, and I hear Nick's concerns. It's, it's a can that has been kicked and the can is extraordinarily dented because we keep on kicking it and we, several of us have heard complaints and heard issues, not all of us have, that just, it just depends on who you are, what word you represent. There's a lot of things that dictate what you hear. So that's why I'm in favor of it. But then going back to staff, which I'm, I'm not against adding staff, is the, the staff members that you're looking for, are those going to be the seasoned people that are going to come in here and, and say, wow, I, this is insane? Or are these the folks that are going to come in and say, oh, here's the playbook, I'm going to follow the playbook?
Yeah, I think, I think we will be trying to, I mean, the clerical people, you know, that's hard. I mean, the person we just hired, she has, you know, experience, but she still needs to get up to speed on, you know, the, our processes and everything else. So it's going to take some time for that individual to do that. The plan reviewer, we would hopefully find somebody who's a seasoned, seasoned professional, because that, we want them to hit the ground running right away. So that would be our goal, is to find somebody who is ready to, you know, do it and get it done right away.
And, and the challenge with that as well is that maybe they're a seasoned professional, but if they're a seasoned professional, it's like, okay, I don't want to rub anybody the wrong way, just going to fall online and do, I don't think the processes are very good, but I'm not going to speak up. And maybe it takes them two to three years to say, why are we doing it this way? We, everybody that, I mean, every company I've worked at, we've always had those people. And it's like, you say, hey, say something, and then they don't say anything until two years down the road, and why do we do it this way? So I, I think adding staff is an excellent idea if that's, if that's where we're at, but I also think that we should bring in the consultant and, and just prove this out once and for all. And everybody knows me, I don't like to spend money, I think this makes us more efficient. I think this, this brings people back to those that say they're never going to do business again, maybe like, oh, maybe I will now, because now that this has become a much better environment to work in. So that's my thoughts on this. Dan?
We have four very meaty discussion items. We have an executive session. I would argue, if we're going to get to the real meat of this, we should probably call an executive session on personnel to discuss whatever we're not talking about in public, because it's a personnel issue. We should talk about this in a session where it's appropriate.
The things I'm hearing are not about, it's not about people, it's process.
And I've, I've had issues brought to me and have met with people who have concerns, and most of the concerns that I've heard are about the length of the process.
Agreed. And that's, that's.
And that's not.
It's the length of the process.
Close session, you have to talk about an individual.
Yes.
Right, so just so I'm clear, the innuendo, the issues, the things that are blowing over and out about a person, it's about a process.
Yes, and it's, and the, it would be about the business or the contractor that doesn't want to stick their neck out, if that makes sense. The contractor saying, I don't want to tell you, I don't want the city to know who's complaining because I don't.
Staff does not need to be at an executive session, it can be just the council members, that's why I'm saying this. If, if it's possible, it is a personnel issue.
But it's not a personnel, that's what I'm telling you, it's not a personnel issue.
Yeah, if it's not, yeah, you'd have to have an individual to talk about, it's not, it can't be like about a policy.
Well, now I know that.
So to move forward, if nobody has anything else, I would just, I'd make a recommendation that we move to city council, approval of resolution 23-091-R, approval of permit process against analysis study and permit fee analysis study.
Second.
Uh, let's do a roll call.
Miller?
No, you start with, start with me since I.
Person who made it.
You are?
Yes. Or I?
Saron?
Hi.
Vocal singer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Sofa?
No.
Chango?
No.
Baron?
No.
Lehman?
I.
Fazi?
No.
Malay?
No.
You are?
I didn't say anything. I, I'm sorry, bag. I.
Yeah.
Passes.
Yes, 9-5.
Okay, we'll talk about it city council again.
Great, thank you.
Hopefully for less time.
Was there a direction from council that you would like us to bring to the next Cow, the proposing an additional staff member?
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
Just to end with that, you know, so I had asked Howard for details to explain exactly what they're doing. Where do you guys see the gaps? What's?
We've got a person in the role right now, so we have an existing job description that we would be bringing to you.
Yeah. And that's why I was asking the question about who's coming in. Who are we trying to, what problem do you guys see that we're trying to solve? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item number 11, Ordinance 23-25. It's been entitled III, Chapter IV. And that is related to amusements. We actually already approved this previously, but we brought it back.
Yes, we brought it back because we heard from one of the existing businesses that would be affected by the changes. He said there were items that were included in that ordinance that he hadn't really realized were there. And so he asked for some additional changes. And those would be to bowling alleys, that he has some leagues that start very early in the morning. And the ordinance says that you can't open before 9:00 AM, and he's got leagues that start at 7:30. So we thought maybe change that to 7:00 AM. The other had to do with probably a, you know, very old aspect of this ordinance, once again, was that the business owner was responsible to watch out for truant children who should be in school. And these days, there are a large contingent of our residents who homeschool their children. And there are children who come from other school districts that may have different days off than we have here in the city of Batavia. And it makes it very difficult for a business owner to realize who is truant and who is there on a day off or attending with their parents. So those were the two additional changes. So if you're okay with those, yes.
I have a question about the opening day of bowling leagues. Are there ordinances for other businesses of what time they can open? Like, why even set it at seven? Or?
So we think of bowling alley as Funway. Bowling alleys are a wide range of different types of businesses. Some bowling alleys more cater to an adult crowd. And I think, in my opinion, it was aimed at kind of the, like a liquor license, you know, looking at it like we didn't, we didn't want a bowling alley that was that type of situation opening before 9:00 in the morning. So.
Like the old gutter.
Yeah.
Our construction before 7:00 either. So construction.
Well, that makes sense because the outdoor noise. And I guess if I'm thinking outside of Funway, who knows, if somebody opens up a bowling alley outside, we might as well put the time in. I was just curious as to why change it to 7:00 when, you know, why not 6:00? Why not 5:00? Why not 24 hours? But I was just curious. We could address that when the need arises, I guess, if it ever does.
Okay.
The only other case I could think of is if there was a bowling alley in a building with other uses, like, say, an apartment, you know, apartments above. It'd be a noise issue.
Right.
But I don't suspect that to be the case anytime soon, so. Yeah.
I've been to some pretty seedy bowling alleys, so.
And they are able to bowl until 1:00 AM, so I don't think that would be a very good adjacent use to residential.
Yeah. Finds me.
I guess then, with those changes, I would recommend that we send that adjustment on to council. Motion and second, any additional discussion regarding the updates to this? I'll take a voice vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item number 12. It's Resolution 23-89-R. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Era Valdivia Contractors. That is for the 2023 Donovan Bridge Cleaning and Painting Steel Railing Project for an amount not to exceed 101,000. How was that? I thought the mayor had that.
Thank you. Dan, this is about maintaining the bridge. You know, a few weeks, several years ago, or for years, we've been having it inspected. It's not that old of a bridge, and I think maintenance is very important. Rahad, I'm sure you've got a lot to add to this. In reading this, it's about, you know, there's two different bid alternatives. One is for, obviously, much more expensive, would be sandblasting down all the, you know, all the metal surfaces and totally repainting them, or otherwise grinding down the bad spots and painting over everything, significantly less than half the price. So I guess the only question I have on this, Rahad, is this budgeted?
Yeah, this is budgeted.
I didn't see that.
We budgeted, I believe, $204,000, not knowing how much it will really cost us.
Okay, so significantly under budget, then?
Yes, with this alternative, it's going to be almost half the price.
Do you want to add anything?
No, the only thing is, we got only one bidder for the project. We reached out to all the contractors that are either pre-qualified to do something like this. But lately, we have been finding out that going in the middle of the year may not be a good idea on a time when there is a lot of work out there. Tolway is doing a lot of bridge work. Everybody's doing bridge work. So it's just that people are busy. So we got only one bidder. However, he did work for us last time when we did the bridge maintenance. He's a pretty good contractor. We have every confidence that he will do a good job, and most likely, it's a good price, so.
Any questions or further, any discussion?
More or less just curious, has there, and I don't know this, but is there any research into something, maybe that's a more of a one-time cost, but we have less maintenance year over year? Maybe, you know, some kind of high-strength coating or?
We did not look into that. This is something that we developed with a structural engineering consulting company who are more knowledgeable about bridge. So they suggested that we do the bridge coating or painting again, so.
If they had a more expensive option, they'd probably give it to you.
Right.
In the future, would it be possible to put out the bid when less active times of the year, when we might get more companies responding?
Yeah, I mean, definitely, we'll put it out early. If you remember, we have been putting out street program typically little late. We normally went out like in April, May. And we have had good success with that, just because by the time most of the big contracts like Naperville and Aurora, they're out, and there are hungry contractors out there who's looking for a job. So we had had good success. So I would not say that it's one way or other, it's good. But this year, maybe an anomaly a little bit, that a lot of contractors, you know, I sent an update about Prairie and Wilson last week. Sounds like most of the contracts are really busy this year, so. I mean, I'm trying to get a project done at my house, and I can't get any phone call back, so.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I would move that we move to council for positive recommendation, Resolution 23-089-R, authorize an execution of a contract with Era Valdivia, sorry, Contractors Incorporated for the 2023 Donovan Wilson Street Bridge Alternancy Cleaning and Painting Steel Railing Project for an amount not to exceed 101,000, which includes 10% contingency amount. First and second, we have a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 14-0. And that can probably go consent agenda, I'm assuming.
Thank you so much.
And the next one I have also, but I'm going to turn that over. It's a discussion for the Safe Roads to School. Blaine Street, Webster Street, and Republic Road.
I'm going to jump in first and then turn it right over to Rahad. I know that Rahad discussed this topic on last COW meeting when I was gone to another meeting. And I'm sure Rahad covered this, but I wanted to kind of get the threshold question out first tonight before we dive into the details. With the Safe Roads to School, the city is receiving federal Safe Roads to School funds, which is great. But one of the caveats that comes with that program is it's an all-or-nothing proposition. We need to do the scope of work that has been presented, all of the scope of work. We cannot peel off parts and pieces of it. So I think one of the threshold questions before City Council, before we dive into the details, obviously, there's opposition. Residents have voiced opposition for a sidewalk on Republic. The people on the east side of the street would be mad if you put the sidewalk on the east side of the street. People on the west side of the street are going to be mad if you put the sidewalk on the west side of the street. If we put a sidewalk on Republic, someone's going to be mad. So I think City Council needs to decide, do you want a sidewalk on Republic? Or larger picture, do you want to do the Safe Roads to School program? And I think once you, if you've committed to that, which I certainly would recommend that you do, then we can go into details of, you know, what the best options are, the east side or the west side. But I just think it's good to get out there that we acknowledge that we're probably not going to make everyone happy on this road, but we feel that the Safe Roads to School program and the city's goal of producing or promoting pedestrian traffic is a much, you know, worthwhile endeavor. And so I'm going to turn that back over to City Council.
Add something to that. I don't think it was mentioned last time, but I did go in and verify that that, the particular stretch of road on Republic is in our bike ped plan as needing sidewalk.
It's one of the priority streets.
It's one of the priority streets.
Yeah.
Sure, back in March, the City Council adopted a bike ped plan. And it, one part of that plan showed priority areas where sidewalk was needed. And Republic Road on this particular stretch was one of the priority projects identified as part of that plan.
So I sent an update to you that, based on the discussion last time, we went out and marked the driveways indicating where that sidewalk is going to go. Obviously, it's a preliminary engineering plan, but it's pretty much going to stay close where you see it. Most of the sidewalk are going to be five feet behind the curb line where it is today. While we were marking out there, we had discussion with the resident about a tree which is pretty close to where McKee and Republic Street is. There is a silver oak tree. The sidewalk will be right behind the tree. We haven't got into, you know, because it's preliminary engineering, we haven't discussed more of the design and how the construction and all that will happen. However, you know, we will plan on not damage the tree. So with the root pruning will be done before the construction will float the sidewalk so that minimum damage is done to the trees, the silver, a couple of silver maple tree out there in that stretch. One of the things that I believe I did talk to you about, we have looked at putting it on the east side. The problem with the east side is two-fold. One is because there is electric poles out there with guywears, your sidewalk is going to be much farther up into the driveway of the people on the east side. So here, it's like five feet, there, it will be more like 10 feet up the driveway. And second thing is, first block of Republic, which is between McKee and Illinois, you can put it on the east side, but then you have to cross back on the west side. So we wanted to avoid those two things. One is go up into people's yard much more than what is needed. And second thing is, the school kids, we didn't want them to switch back and forth, you know, like come to a stop sign, cross, and then cross over again. So those are the two considerations. We did look at it, and that's why we did not choose the east side. But again, I think, to go back to what Gary said, we can do east side, or we can do west side. Either way, I think we'll be looking at some residents who are not going to be happy. It's the council ultimately has to provide us direction, which side you'd like us to put the sidewalk in.
Thank you, Rahad. An hour before the meeting tonight, on my way home from work, I went and drove down that street. And I have to tell you, there was three families pushing strollers as I just drove on that little section of street. I think there's definitely a need for sidewalk there. So that's my opinion on that. Any other, are there other questions or discussion? Gary?
Just one other point, or one other point of interest or point of information for City Council. On behalf of the Tree Commission, Scott Haynes did put together a memo, and the Tree Commission, due to the tree issues that Rahad's mentioned, the Tree Commission's going to recommend on the east side in order to avoid tree issues. And again, their charge is trees. So everybody has their own set of issues, and Tree Commission's recommending the east side, so.
And just to clarify, that's only for that one block, which is between McKee and Illinois.
You remind me, north of Maple Lane on Republic, there aren't sidewalks there yet, correct?
Uh.
I feel like I used to, that whole stretch. I used to walk this quite often, and I remember, north of Maple Lane, I believe, walking in the road with strollers. So Gary, maybe you would know also, like, if there's no sidewalks north of Maple on the rest of Republic, are there plans to get those in there also?
Normally, Safe Road to School, they look at, or they tend to fund anything that is very close to the school. Once you have that link, then you go and make the case that I want to put more sidewalk in to link that sidewalk to rest of the sidewalk. Typically, they have said that within two miles of his school, because that's the walking zone. But you have to have the school connected first to even go further out.
And sections like you're referencing may ultimately not fall under a Safe Roads to School program. They may fall under the city's program. If you recall, the bike plan had requested $300,000 additional for pedestrian improvements every year. So, yes, we want to eventually have a sidewalk on one side of every street in town. How that's funded will yet to be determined.
Other discussion, questions?
Comment? I definitely feel that this road needs a sidewalk, considering it is in between Memorial Park and an elementary school.
I have, my kids have played sports at that park right there, and when one was playing and the other one was little, we would walk around the neighborhood and end up on the streets. And I, same thing with the other people traversing the street with small children, and definitely a need for at least, you know, sidewalk on one side of that street. I agree.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this issue?
My name is Paris Stoffel. I live back on Republic Road. My husband is Lieutenant Greg Stoffel. He is on duty tonight with the fire department. In 26 years, there has never been an incident, ever, of anyone being hurt on Republic Road from Chabana to McKee, ever. Our house is 66 years old. We have an indention of the street in front of our house. People walk it, I walk it daily. It's a wonderful place to live. Obviously, none of you live on Republic. We love the lawns, we love the big trees, and if they put a sidewalk on my house, it'll be 10 feet in. It'll be in my front yard. And we're very upset about it. I never received a letter like the other people did several weeks ago about this. I found out yesterday about this. Yesterday. And I can tell you, we all walk it, people with strollers. We love the area. We don't want sidewalks. There's a sidewalk on North Avenue. People, kids ride their bikes. They go to school, they ride all the way with parents, with grandparents. They get driven. We don't want sidewalks. There is no reason. Maple Avenue doesn't have sidewalks. Chabana doesn't have sidewalks. I found out yesterday about this. Yesterday. And I can tell you, we all walk it, people with strollers. We love the area. We don't want sidewalks. There's a sidewalk on North Avenue. People, kids ride their bikes. They go to school, they ride all the way with parents, with grandparents. They get driven. We don't want sidewalks. There is no reason. Maple Avenue doesn't have sidewalks. Shabana doesn't have sidewalks. Carriage doesn't have sidewalks. Why three blocks on Republic Road should have sidewalks? I just, it's been safe. No accidents, no one's been injured. It's not like Route 31 where someone gets hit. Mayor Schulke sold me my home. He was with me. We pulled up, it was a beautiful area, a gem. No sidewalks. Don't do it to us. Don't do it to us. People, I walk it every single day. Cars go around us. I can tell you, I work from home. Children walk with their parents. If they, they walk, cars go around them. It's, it would be a disaster to put sidewalks and take, go through some trees. There are going to be taken trees down. I have shade trees. It will be going right across my, the middle of my yard. If I have my door open, people will be walking in the middle of my yard. And it's very sad. Everybody is fine. Whoever got the grant. Make it, make it from Van Nordwick to McKee, on McKee, that's where we need a bike, a sidewalk. We are all safe in this area. And there's all these other people who can verify that. It's a, it's a safe area. People aren't flying down the street. There's stop signs on every part. People barely are going fast. Don't do it, people. Please, I'm asking you. If anybody could walk, come over, see our houses. These beautiful lawns are going to be, have a concrete slab going through. It's not fair. I've lived there 12 years. Never once has there been anyone, and you say, "safe for schools." What about in the summer? Kids are still walking on the streets. They're riding their bikes. They're coming from Memorial Park. It's perfectly safe. It does not need a sidewalk. It does not. It's a beautiful area, and that's why everybody loves it. Beautiful lawns. No sidewalk going through them. You're going to talk about putting it through people's, going right next to some people's kitchens, that they'll be looking out and there'll be a sidewalk. I guarantee you too, people who are walking will still walk in the street. Because they'll be so close to our homes. They won't want to be walking in the middle of my yard. Honestly, I have pictures. I am begging you, please do not do this. Use the money somewhere else. On Shabana, all the way just right off of 31, two new houses were built. And I understand, when you build a new house, you have to put a sidewalk. There's a sidewalk to nothing. It's ridiculous. I, I beg you, don't put it there. Fix the sidewalks around HC Storm that are already broken or busted up. But we don't need sidewalks on three blocks. And then it'll turn up Maple for a little bit and go across those people's yards. There's two houses that already have children. They, they walk their children to school. People are either walking their children, the grandparents are walking, or they're driving and parking at Illinois and Republic and walking their children. But we, please, we're begging you, don't put sidewalks in. It'll take away the beauty of our homes. I mean, we all have these beautiful lawns, and then to put this sidewalk through will be a disaster. That's what I've got to say.
Let me make a quick comment on something here. My name is Bill Matek. I live at 347 Republic. You saw three strollers going down that street on that day. That was probably a very heavy traffic.
It was within five minutes just before this meeting.
Fine, that happens. During school days and that, I see maybe half a dozen, maybe a dozen kids, not group, but strung out, walking down the street over there, going down the street, many of them on their bikes. They're not going to ride that on the sidewalk. And when you talk about walking in the street, what this lady was over here, especially in winter time, we go for a walk, you can't walk on the sidewalk, even where there are I agree with everything they're saying over there. For myself, I'm not all that worried. I'm more concerned, and I back up everything this lady says, but I'm more concerned with the funding aspect of it. Because I don't plan on being here more than a year at the most. My ex-wife died in '22. She inherited the house to my daughter, I'm getting rid of it. And the way we were sodomized by the King County Assessors Office last year, I can just imagine what the funding on this would do. So I don't know where this is all coming from, but I would agree with that, for the amount of traffic. And also, the schools that are, where the children are picked up and dropped off over on Van Nordwick over there, the cars go around the block, you have a parade of cars anyway, and this is even past streets that have sidewalks on them. Van Nordwick has a sidewalk on it, you still have a parade of cars going down there to pick up the kids and drop them off. So I don't think the sidewalk would serve a purpose that would be valuable to put it in. This is my own opinion, and this is for the future generations, as far as I'm concerned too. So I have to say.
Thank you again. The council has to balance. You're looking at a plan for sidewalks in the village, and you're seeing some pretty vehement opposition from some of the residents that are involved with it. That will be a political decision you'll need to make. Recognize that those kinds of political decisions will most likely be reflected at the polls in the future. I would ask, part of the vehemence of the opposition is how we're being communicated with on the topic. A point we raised at the first meeting was the lack of notice. Supporting documents for this agenda from the city, residents impacted by these new sidewalk locations have been informed of the discussion taking place tonight. Madam City Administrator, how were we notified?
We sent notices out to everyone.
No, we received no letter. We received no notice. The only reason anyone is here tonight is a concerned citizen knowing that the Open Meetings Act requires you to post 48 hours' notice. We noticed it on the agenda 48 hours ago. At the last meeting, we were polite and professional, asking for at least the courtesy that a zoning is given of notice to affected residents. We got 48 hours' notice. Is that what you want to do in how you're treating your residents, which are vehemently opposed to something you're discussing? Many of the people who would like to be here tonight can't take off work on 48 hours' notice. Reiterating a comment made earlier, and it was made, you know, that we brought up at the last meeting. A Freedom of Information Act request was filed with the City of Batavia Police for any and all accident reports in the project area. There are zero accident reports anywhere in the project area. Anecdotal evidence is given earlier, and from other residents going back 47 years, no one is aware of any accidents in the project area. Anecdotally, the fire department is not aware of anything. Their response was, any, any incidents would have a police report. And the police do not have any accident reports based on a Freedom of Information Act request. Yes, there are concerns with trees. We have discussed it with the Tree Commission and the city forester. There is a disagreement. We are seeking the advice of a professional forester with experience in construction management. We need the time for us to pay for that work and to get the professional report of a forester, you know, familiar with trees. The answer from the city forester, and if you need to, I'd be glad to play the voicemail, was, "Don't worry about it. We do these kinds of projects all the time." We kind of went, "Okay." Another option or problem that was raised was the budget for the, for the project. One of the concerned residents works in the concrete industry. Their answer was slightly hysterical, that there's no way you're going to get that amount of sidewalk installed for what you're budgeting. We're sort of looking at, if you're going to tear up our front yards, at least do it Are there any questions that the council has? There were questions regarding, we have concerns with the loss of parking. There was discussion about the length of, of space that's needed to park a vehicle. We just raised the point, is somebody correct me, doesn't the village zoning require 18 feet for a parking space? If you're trying to tell us we can park cars in five or six feet, yet your own zoning requires 18 feet? One of the concerns many of the residents have is that we, most of us, will lose 50% of the available parking in the driveways with the installation of a sidewalk, due to the fact you can't park blocking a sidewalk. That is one of the other concerns. I would ask, can this, a decision on this item be tabled for at least, I'm going to ask for 45 days, we'll settle for 30, and we develop a better process to notify neighbors when it's going to be brought up again? I will offer, city staff or several of the, at least two of the council members have my personal email. We have developed a neighbors' email list to advise neighbors. We actually had a meeting planned for tomorrow night in the Memorial Park Shelter, but it, you know, we needed to reschedule it once we found out what the meeting topic tonight was. So can we get the two things, at least? Let's table it to allow the concerned residents that weren't able to be here tonight, an opportunity to provide their input, and go from there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that this is a...
By the way, this is just listed as a discussion, so there is no vote tonight.
There is no ordinance or resolution.
Okay, so I have quite a few points to make. I'm not going to repeat what I brought up at the last meeting. My obvious concerns of the last meeting. But one of my things I want to bring up is I did a bit of a, you know, a quick math exercise here. When the people were bringing up the idea of the nursing home, and they wanted extra parking spaces, there was a huge concern, and there was a, somebody voted against the project if they were going to put in the extra parking spaces. And because of the green space, and Batavia needs the green space. So my math might not be exactly correct, but they have 96 beds. Typically, 96 beds, they'd have one, a half parking spot per bed, that's 48 parking spots. They were requesting 107 parking spots. That's 59 additional parking spots. The average parking lot is about 300 to 350 square feet per parking spot. If you take the extra 59 spots, that ranges anywhere from an additional 17,700 feet of pavement to 20,650 feet of pavement. In this proposal for the sidewalk, you are figuring 3,500 feet of walk, almost all of it, except for just a smidgen of it, is going to be five feet. That's 17,500 feet of sidewalk. If you take out for the driveways that are already there, that are already pavement, at about 12 feet in length each, it's about 360 feet. So you've got 17,140 feet of green space that you are taking away. So that's only 560 to 3,500 square feet more, or less, I'm sorry, than what the nursing home wants to add, to have enough parking for the visitors, for the employees, et cetera. So 83 to 97%. So I just wanted to bring that up, that one part of the meeting, green space, and now you want to take away our green space to put in sidewalk. Another point I want to make is if I was over at the school and wanted to get to the park, I wouldn't be walking on Republic. I'd simply walk up Illinois to the park. And then I also just have a few questions. We were told that Republic Road was determined a priority for the walking and ped earlier. And what determined that priority?
Input from the community and focus groups that they had with members of the community to identify roadways that they felt needed improvements to make walkers and bikers feel more safe.
Is there documentation on that that is public?
Yeah, the bike ped plan is right on our website.
Okay. As far as the surveys?
Could we limit the conversation to the person at the microphone?
Yeah, are those, like, are those surveys publicly available?
The, the information that was provided to the consultant as part of those is contained in the document.
Okay, okay. And then, you know, now you're talking from switching, you know, it was originally proposed on the east side of the street, and that's what was submitted, and now you want to put it on the west side of the street, and then now you want to maybe put some of it on the east side and some of it on the west? Is that consistent with the federal funding, or does that go against the, the grant that's been offered?
City policy, or city general policy, was supposed to be sidewalks on both sides of the street. Eventually, if you press the Fast Forward button, 5100, your decisions are both sides.
But as far as the federal grant money?
The federal grant requires that we put sidewalk on those stretches of road, from the point that we identified as the start to the point that we identified as the end. It doesn't dictate which side of the street that it needs to go on.
Because when it was submitted, it was submitted, you know, for the one side of the street, so. Okay. And then I was just wondering how the budget was initially established, because I am concerned that this is going to be considerably over the initial budget that's been, you know...
So the, there is a formula for how much it costs for, to install sidewalk on a per-square-foot basis. And so if the $250,000 that we received under the federal funding is insufficient, then we would have to make up the difference between that.
Is there a contingency plan if the project is way over budget? Like, if the bids come in and it's considerably over the 352,000 that was...
They won't force us to do the project, we can give the money back. But if we don't do the project, then we won't get the grant money.
Right, yeah, because the grant money, you have to do it, and then they refund 80% up to the $250,000. Okay. And then, you know, and also, you know, as far as like the strollers go, you know, I think the strollers are on Republic, walking down Republic, it's a nice, wide, smooth, open road to walk on. The sidewalks are bumpy, there's obstacles, you know, there's areas where they've been ground down, you know, they're not wide enough for two people to walk. I truly, I mean, I've, I've had to dodge strollers on my way to work, and there's sidewalk right there, but they're in the street, because they prefer to use the street. And, you know, even on our way here today, had to go around a pedestrian, looked over there, there was a sidewalk. People choose not to use the sidewalks. That's all I have. Oh, actually, I do have one more thing. You know, I was kind of looking at the other sections that are being done, and on Blaine, I just, it's a section of walk, it's hardly going to serve anybody, and I need to go do that walk myself, but it's taking kids into a pretty desolate area. If I had a child that was fifth grade or under, or even in junior high, I don't think I would feel comfortable for them, you know, going from the street into a sidewalk-only area, going by businesses to head down to Alice Gusterson School. Again, I haven't walked it, but I, I think it might be a good idea if everybody here went ahead and went to Blaine and did that walk, that they would get to Alice Gusterson School, and, you know, determine if you would feel safe with your, you know, 10-year and younger children walking that. Because just doing a Google Earth view, it just didn't look like a practical solution either.
I grew up in that neighborhood. My parents still live in that neighborhood. I walk to school every day, and I did not feel that, I kind of take it as offensive that you're calling that neighborhood desolate, so.
Well, it's just that one, it's going from that stretch into an area that's not like, it doesn't look like a street. It just looks like it's only a walk, and it's very tree-covered, it's just very kind of isolated from a lot. And again, like I said, I haven't walked it, I'm going to go, go walk it myself. I'm going to go, go walk it myself. You know, I'm just not sure if young kids should be.
Young kid walking by myself all the time there, and like I said, it's not desolate, it's not unsafe. It's one of the safest neighborhoods in the town.
No, I, and I went to Alice Gusterson School until I was 10 and I walked to school. And I'm just saying on the particular stretch that the sidewalk would get the kids to, you know, it's not a stretch where there's, you know, a road next to it. I mean, I have
Goes to a walking path that leaves.
It goes to a walking path, yeah. And, you know, there's a lot of people, joggers, that have been on walking paths all over the country that have been, you know, abducted and, and killed. So, you know, you're just taking kids into what seems like a pretty kind of like little isolated stretch. And I just, I'm wondering if that's the best route for them to get to school.
Cost been being used for 50 years. It was the Hilly Hills. That's the same walking route that's been used forever.
Okay. Just wanted to double check. I guess I hadn't been down that way. It was a Google Earth view, you know, just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
Alderman Malley?
Yes.
If I can just make a comment regarding cost because there's been a couple of comments made tonight regarding sidewalk going to be more expensive than what we anticipated. Our city council has made a commitment to add sidewalk or other pedestrian improvements to the town. Sidewalk is going to cost X dollars in the years 2023, 2024, 2025. It is going to cost X dollars, whatever that is. If we do sidewalk on this project, we get safer routes to school funding, which is essentially free money that the city gets. If we, if we decide that X dollars is too expensive, then we probably don't want to do any sidewalks because we'd be doing other projects where we wouldn't be getting grant funding and we've already determined that the cost is too expensive. So ultimately, council would have to decide whether you want to do sidewalk, but on this project, at least we'd be getting grant funds that would offset some of those higher costs.
Yes.
Hi, Roger Stone, 307 Republic. Again, not to repeat things that we talked about last time, but I had to look at a couple of things that, that interest me from the comments that were made towards the end of our last session. I'll start with the, the comment of the stroller, similar comment. Do, which block was that? Do you know which, was it 300?
I went to see where the markings were put in place that Raht had done, and on that stretch, there was three families, each with a stroller, three young families, two mother, father, and their child in a stroller.
Would that be the longest stretch, so the 300 block? Do you know?
It's, it's, it was right there. I couldn't tell you exactly the
We'll just kind of cut to the chase aspect of it. To my knowledge, and I've been there for 30 years, there are nobody that live on the 300 block anyways that have strollers, aged kids. So I think you got to ask the question the other way around. Why would somebody purposely walk that street unless they felt that it was good to walk and safe to walk without a sidewalk?
I don't know where they, where they're from, where they're from, but they were on that street, which we're very concerned about.
Yeah. But again, we've heard tonight that it's not been a safety issue for that block in any form or fashion, whether it be accidents or abductions or, you know, whatever else you want to put under the belt. The comment about, again, I was backed by the water thing, so I couldn't hear real well. Bicycle path, is that what it's alluding to? I, I don't know anything about that. Can you, can we just?
The city had a bike plan that was implemented back in 2007, and we thought maybe 16 years later, maybe we should take a fresh look at that. And so the city hired a consultant, they put out a survey for the community to respond to. They had in-person meetings, both outside, and we did rides around our community in areas that were identified that were of particular concern. And then they developed a plan for both sidewalks. And then they have a whole nother list that has to do with roadway improvements. And then the last part was intersection improvements.
So is the idea the bike path would be part of the street or would be part of the sidewalk?
Doesn't have anything to do with this project, so this project is part of the sidewalk plan. There's a list of 15 projects that we want to accomplish over the next 10 years, and this stretch of Republic was identified as having no sidewalk on either side, and so their recommendation was to put sidewalk on one side of it. Didn't mention anything about bike path.
Okay. Again, I'm not sure why it even came up then, and I'm not trying to be, you know, obnoxious about it. I just didn't know if the comment was that we would put sidewalks in and therefore expect that kids would ride the bikes on the sidewalk, which
No, it was just mentioned that this sidewalk was mentioned in the bike PUD plan.
There's some questions about the FOIA request and what information was made public, and that's what Ms. Malley was talking about.
Okay. Again, back to the whole stroller comment. I think somebody else, it may have been the same people, right? I also noted that people coming here down Illinois, sure enough, there were people walking the streets when there was a perfectly good sidewalk. People are going to choose choices. I, I happen to be, you know, fairly tall person. A lot of the trees aren't cut, so I'm either dodging or ducking, or for me, I typically walk the streets so I can avoid all that. Just a comment. In regards to the line painting, thank you. That was very helpful, at least, you know, I had an idea where it would be coming through on my particular street and/or, you know, house perspective. Tight for us, but, you know, at least it gave me more comfort in knowing what was going to be happening, so thank you for that. Still not in favor. I still think, you know, you guys talked about the 100-year plan and that, you know, you hope to have sidewalks in through it. I think you were going to find in a 20-year plan, the reality is, is we're all going to be looking for green space because that's going to be the new directive. I mean, it's already there, right? This is not something new. There's a lot of places that are striving for that kind of, you know, what's the trade-offs, right? And I think there was some talk today even about the carbon footprints and so forth in today's earlier discussion. So I think we're going to find ourselves going the opposite direction before, before 100 years. And I think that covers it for me today. Thank you for your time.
Just a reminder, we have about 40 minutes left until we hit that 10 o'clock deadline. We have a three hour and a half long discussion item coming up. I don't know if we want to, there's a discussion item with no vote tonight.
Yeah. Discussion, we have time for one more comment.
Real quick, Larry Winters, 318 Republic Road. I did make comments last week, so I'll be very brief. I realize that there is federal funding for this that's going to help out with everybody, but as you've heard tonight, nobody here is in favor of a sidewalk on Republic Road. And so since you are our representatives, you represent us, I think it'd be important to hear from us. You have heard from us. You may have had a email or two of somebody who wanted the sidewalks, but we canvassed the area yesterday and other than one person, everybody was opposed to a sidewalk. So as our representatives, I just ask you, consider the people that spoke tonight and the fact that that's our wishes. Thank you.
I just would like to say one more thing. Again, Mary Stoffel.
We've got to move on here to
Can I say one more thing?
You had ample time.
I would invite all of you to come and walk the path that you're asking the sidewalk to go through, honestly, with us. I would ask you to come and walk through our yards and see how close it's going to be to the homes next to us. The house next to me, which is Republic and Maple, they have a tripod dog that is, is on an electric fence. You will be cutting into that area. That dog won't know what's going on if he sees people walking by, but I can guarantee you, people won't walk on those sidewalks.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We have to move on.
Thank you.
So we, staff was looking for some direction. I don't think we provided you any direction.
Yeah.
So we need to provide some direction. We want to like continue this discussion in a different meeting?
Well, I, I think, you know, this has been our plan that we want to expand sidewalks. We've identified safe routes to school. We got federal funding for it. I think if we pass this opportunity up for that funding, we'd be not serving all this, all the, our constituents in the city to follow through on our plan. So I would recommend to staff that we move forward with the project. I don't think there's any, well, I don't think there's any more discussion needed necessarily, so I think we should just move it to whether, to the resolution stage, and then we can address it again at that point in time, one final time, I suppose.
At some point, this project will be bid and the contract will come back to this body for approval, and so that is another opportunity for people to voice their concerns before we actually construct the project.
Are there, under the grant guidelines, do we have more streets available to do?
No, unfortunately, the funding was provided for this street, the three streets that I listed, Webster, Blaine, and Republic. So it's tagged to these locations only.
These notices require certified mail that goes out?
No, because this project doesn't require any ride of way or easement from residents or doesn't require any tree removal. We do not need to provide any notice to anybody.
Putting sidewalk in right of way that's already owned by the city?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why we don't need to provide any notice to anybody. We could just go ahead and do the sidewalk construction.
So no property acquisition is required at all?
No, none of that.
Can you remind me, I'm trying to look at this, has it been finalized if it's on the west or east side on Republic yet?
So as I said, we looked at the east side, but as staff, we said, we don't want the kids to cross it back and forth. And also on the east side, we had concern that the sidewalk is going to be up on people's ear much more than on the west side, so we ruled it out and, and we said, let's put it on the west side. What I can offer, if there is concern about, and again, it's only if the concern about the trees, the two silver maple tree, what we could do is we could do the same thing for the east side, just for one block, Illinois to McKee. We could go and mark those driveways and I can send a new letter out to all the residents saying we have marked it on the east side and west side, both side, so that they're notified. I, I'm not sure, there are a lot of residents here and, and why there is so much concern about that they didn't get notified. We can send it and see, council can then decide which side they wanted, you know? Is east side better than west side? It's, it's a toss-up, you know? There will be some angry residents on the east side too, because the sidewalk will be up in the area much more than what we have on the west side.
As a policy decision, how many miles of sidewalk do we need to install? I don't have the time to walk every block.
Yes.
There's got to be a better way to do that. I mean, Abby, I know you're online, I, I do ride the, the scooter, and I've seen a lot on my ward, but I don't, this is a tough policy decision to have, to have to do this each time. Because I want to be careful that I'm not, not treading in that place. Let's have some instructions.
Well, what's, what's the consensus here to?
At that point, we can turn it down or?
There will be a proposal coming back because we have to move to the design phase. You'll, you'll get a chance to hire a consultant and, and get residents' input again. And when we open the bid for construction, you'll be looking at that again, look at the cost and, and approve that. So there are plenty of opportunities to
We have, we have rejected bids before.
Yeah, so.
Okay. As Rahat just indicated, we can mark the east side too, the driveways on the east side, and that at least gives some more information for those residents who live out there as well as city council members.
As long as Rahat doesn't mind doing that, I'm fine with that too.
We'll be happy to do it. I think, I think, you know, I'm just a little bit disheartened that a lot of people are saying they didn't get noticed, so we'll market, we'll send a letter out, we'll bring it back in two weeks again. And, and I will email one of the residents, I mean, they're here, so it's coming back in two weeks again, exactly two weeks.
I don't know, I don't think we have to have another discussion in two weeks.
For the resolution, so it will end up being a discussion.
Right, 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 okay.
What would be the timeline on a bid, do we know?
It's going to move to design phase, and once I dot approve the design, then we move to the bidding. I would say most likely next spring will be when it will be bidding.
Okay.
2024 spring. Unfortunately, I will not be here for the next Cow meeting, so Gary will probably be here. Sorry, Gary.
No, it's, but it sounded like we don't need to bring it back to the next Cow meeting. If I understand council correctly, that we'll bring it back when we're ready to award the design contract.
Yes, correct.
You don't get out of it, Rahat.
We can wait two more meetings, but I, I want to make it clear that we want to just do the east side between Illinois and McKee because farther up, you cannot, there will be a lot more impact, so it will be just between Illinois and McKee. And I think if I counted correctly, there are five residents who are going to be, whose driveway is going to be marked with this.
That then?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that right away.
If it is possible to collect the email address from a representative from the group to give them a heads up when the item is expected to come back to council, that would be a, a nice gesture if we could possibly do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It would be, it would be nice to approve communication if there's a way to get.
They indicated there is some type of a residential group email, so maybe if you get one email from them, then they can put you on, and you can have an email channel.
I have Mart's email, Mr. Tipton's email, so.
Just a heads up.
And then I think he indicated that he has gathered everybody's email address, so I would, I would respectfully request him to just forward the email. I'll, I'll
Sounds reasonable.
We do not have all the emails addressed. Yesterday, we went and handed out flyers to all the residents on both sides of the street, letting them know that there's a meeting today. So that's the best we could get it out because we only figured it out on yesterday.
Maybe mailing is best.
I'll just use USPS then.
Yeah.
USPS.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. How to best handle this? We got about a half hour left. Is anyone okay with staying a little bit later than 10 o'clock this evening?
Maybe. I would just say we don't start another agenda item after 10. I second that.
Table anything that
We still have executive session, we have to
Yeah, an executive session will be every bit of a half hour. Moving on to item number 14, this is a discussion regarding the recommendations for safety improvements to Route 31.
One second. Carmen had to leave. She left the pictures for all of you. Everyone got a picture? The gentleman is William Holm, and he is from the Homestead. She met him today because she was over at Millview, and he knew Emily and wanted to see where she was hit. So Carmen is going to send out the rest of the story to all of you, but she wanted you to see the picture. Thank you.
Alderman Beck, I've stopped sharing in case you want to put your presentation up.
Okay, sounds great. Apologies for not being in the room. So Dan, if you can help facilitate this as much as possible, that would be helpful. I sent an email out yesterday reviewing what we went over last meeting. over last meeting. And here's kind of the four bullets of what we talked about. The Hawk system is now legal in Illinois. The governor signed the House bill into effect on the 30th, so we're, we're kind of back to our original question that we had. Are we in support of speaking to IDOT about replacing our rectangular rapid flashing beacons with Hawk systems? I sent a Street Trees literature review and would welcome any questions or comments about the nuances that were discussed there. Particularly liked the recommendation last meeting about maybe focusing on the cemetery as kind of a wide open space around that curb as you come into downtown, being a spot for street trees. Painting intersections, we noted general support for this from the council for discussing that with IDOT. We didn't do a poll about the fate of the flashing beacons in the meantime. Thank you to Rahat for all of the information that was sent over on Friday. And we can, we can take these one at a time, or is there general questions on any one of these from last time, or do you want to move on to other topics?
Anyone feel any... Gary? I would just ask for, following Alderman Beck's kind of lead, for you guys to at least provide direction on each one of these items. We can ask IDOT for anything in the permit. That'll then open the conversation for city council to talk about it, but we need to know what to ask for.
Sure.
Dan, is that Alan?
Share a hand, go ahead.
I would definitely say I would be in support of replacing our current signals with the Hawk systems and going back to the McKee intersection. If we could look into, once road diet's completed, putting a Hawk signal back there too, I think that would be great.
Alan?
Okay, I guess, first question, I guess, might be for Gary. If we were to go to a Hawk system, can we use the same pad and same location as the RF, or RFBs are at?
My first guess would be no, because a Hawk system would probably be a cantilever, so you'd need a larger foundation.
Oh, okay. And I don't remember where I had seen it. Might have been even some, something that I had emailed to me. There's one, and I don't know if it's like an updated Hawk system, or if it's an updated, you know, rectangular rapid flashing beacon, but they line the entire pole, both what's over the street and what's alongside the street with an LED. So it makes it much more obnoxious and much more, you know, hey, you need to stop here. There's a reason why this light is on. And I'm trying to think where I noticed that, if it's, if it's one that's really bright that's going out on Bliss Road, or somewhere else where there's one on, on a two-lane road that's at a higher speed, that has a much brighter, much more intense light at it.
Is that of the same three-light configuration?
I believe so. The one I believe out at Bliss, I think it's just got, it might even be just different lighting on it. But it's very intense, you know, you're in kind of a wooded, forested area there, and it's, it's extremely bright. Or at least, that's what I noticed at the last time I was through there. So I guess that would be my comment on those, whether we, you know, ask to go to the Hawk system or upgrade what we have to something that's brighter and more all-encompassing of the road, meaning both overhead and alongside the road. And then on the street trees, I'm all for trying to figure out how we implement that into the plan we have here. And as far as painting intersections, I have no problem with, if we want to come up with whatever we think would work and last out on the roads and we can get IDOT approval on. And, you know, I think that's, that to me is the most important thing, that whatever we do, as we do this, we integrate it with the road diet. And I think the one thing I would like to add to this is, at the point we get to going into the road diet beyond just the striping of the road and narrowing it down to three lanes, when we get to actually, anything else that has physically be done, I think we all have to be ready to figure out how we pay for a light at the Forest Preserve Millview intersection. And I think that has to be a discussion, maybe even with our, our county board members, that, you know, not only do they have to be part of this, the state has to be part of it, and we have to be part of it. All three of us have to pay for it. Because I think that's one of the things, to me, safety-wise, you know, we're asking our kids to get off the streets and get onto sidewalks and get onto the paths that we have and obey the bike laws that we have, but yet we're not making it easy for them to use those. And, you know, I think it's very important that that's something that we have to be ready to fight for at that end of this project. That's all I have on those four.
All in favor of the Hawk. I think it goes with bullet point four. Whatever the federal guidelines and everything are, it doesn't matter to me, to be honest, because whether we want to call the evidence that we have in Batavia anecdotal or not, it hasn't been a good, it hasn't been good for us. Hate them, get rid of them in the meantime, go for the Hawk. Painting intersections, sure, sounds great. Street trees, the only question I would, again, I still think, I drive down 31 every day of my life. I don't see a lot of spaces. I do, I looked at the cemetery and I was curious as to, some of those plots are like right next to the sidewalk. So I don't know, are we reducing plots by putting trees there? So, and beyond that, I just, I don't, and Abby, I'm sorry, there's no way I had time to read that article between last night and today. So I, I don't, I understand the, the need for trees and I see them in very specific areas. I just don't see it here personally. It just seems like there's plenty of places we can plant trees in this town, and I don't know that 31 is the right spot for it, because it's so heavily treed right now. And we're going to a two-lane road, which is gonna change it significantly, change the appearance of the road, or three-lane road, sorry.
That have the desired impact, the street trees would need to be located probably on the parkway, which is a very skinny parkway in that area. And if you read through that article, whenever you get to it, the, it talks about the safety that, that pedestrians feel when using the sidewalk too, in terms of having that buffer from fast-moving traffic, having that line of trees and having that kind of barrier there, and how that increases comfort, safety, and then also increases the likelihood that people will walk that stretch.
So I lived right across the street from the cemetery for many, many, many years. There is no sidewalk there. There really is no way, I would really think it'd be very feasible to put trees along there. I don't think they're needed along there.
I think that the, that we should look at things that would be able to be easily done rather quickly. I think the painting of the intersections is a great idea. And I think that if IDOT's all cool with that, that would be something that could be done real quick. And that would be something the public could see real fast too, which would also, I think, make them feel a little bit better, like we're actually accomplishing something with this. And I think that you just keep the RF, the RFBs in place until we figure out if we can use a Hawk system. And then with the Hawk system, Gary, there's, 31 is still a truck-traveled route. I mean, is it something, how high are these cantilevers gonna have to be to allow these trucks to get through? And then how effective is the system gonna be in there?
Well, so a Hawk system would be submitted a traffic signal. And that's, that's the cantilevers.
Yeah.
And that's, that is the design of a Hawk signal system. They're, they're essentially look like a traffic signal.
It just seems, okay, I'm just not sure how, how well that would work on the places we're talking about putting them.
Well, if a stoplight would work, then this would work, if it's in the same spot.
Okay. You know, a truck needs a certain amount of time to stop. If we're just talking about just the actual physics of a semi, they need like 600 feet to be able to stop. So if one of those gets pushed, I'm not necessarily sure that a semi is gonna just be able to stop all of a sudden, when they don't know that that's a regular stoplight.
Yeah, so, so and again, I know there's a lot of different variations, but the ones that I have been exposed to, when a pedestrian pushes, pushes the button, much like at a traffic signal, it doesn't necessarily just instantly turn. It will, when they're ready, when it's ready to turn, it'll cycle yellow and then it'll cycle red. So it's just like a traffic signal in that respect, to allow the pedestrians to cross. The ones that I'm familiar with, it's red, while the pedestrians first start to cross, it has a period of time. Then the red goes to a flashing red, which all of us from our driver's training, when we know it turns to a flashing red, that means you stop, but then you can proceed forward. And then it goes back to flashing yellow or dark. So it's not, it's not like the RFB, RRBs, where today you press the button and they start flashing. If you press the button with a Hawk, it'll either, it'll either immediately go into yellow, or it'll pause and then go into yellow. But it gives traffic that yellow light to slow down and stop. It's not an immediate red, to get at your question.
Well, I have a suggestion, is we start calling them the double RFBs, just so it's easier to say. And, yeah, that's it.
I would also like to signal support for the street, for the street painting, especially the options that basically have the offset stop bar at crosswalks, so that there is less of a blind spot from one car in one lane stopping.
Yeah, I'll double down on that. And I, and I agree with the fact of getting something done so that the public feels that we're doing something. We all know, we care about it, we're doing something, we're active in this, you know, but perception's reality out there. And we're continuing to get beat up and have some, you know, upset people if they don't see some immediate like, hey, this is what we're doing, or, you know, I don't know if that's putting out a newsletter as a council or something, I don't know. But obviously, something like this would be, hey, they're, they're definitely doing something.
One of the things that's out there and very visible to people are the crossing guards.
Yeah, that's true. Yep, which I thought was a fantastic idea right off the bat. Yep. So the steps this summer for immediate steps is there will be, the city's gonna advertise, certainly make public, that it's gonna submit its permit for the road diet. The city's gonna have to have a meeting with the public associated with that permit. The city also is gonna host a formal Phase 1 public meeting later on, when school gets back in session for the road diet, the actual formal study. We've talked about these two different tracks that the road diet's going on. But as far as physical construction or pavement striping goes, I think everyone should set their expectation that that's not gonna happen till IDOT reviews the permit. And they've assured us that they can get that done, so that we can go to, to that in the spring of 2024.
This weekend, I was both in Berwyn and in Barrington, two very different municipalities. But it was really interesting, you know, Barrington downtown, I would say, is similar to our Wilson Street downtown. And they had very well-designated crosswalks, it was very visible, traffic moved very slowly, a great downtown concept. Berwyn, I got to watch and experience, and Abby was there also, pedestrians attempting to cross four lanes of traffic in a very unsafe way. And they were definitely plain frogger. So not well-marked or any crosswalks, it was not a safe way to cross, but a lot of pedestrians, they have a lot of, there's a lot of people walking there. So what I did see in Berwyn in a private parking lot was a very well-marked crosswalk in a very fun way with big circles like offset from each other. And I was like, see, that's a fun crossing. And it totally caught my eye, both as a pedestrian, but also as a vehicle driving. It makes you, it stands out. And so I'm very supportive of painting intersections, making them very visible, making it very visible to drivers who come to our community, that there are more than just drivers here. We also have people walking and crossing and biking. So anything we can do just to continue drawing people's attention to that, that we are not a community of only vehicles, I'm in supportive of.
Can I just make one note on that? I have made an observation as I've been driving around, that there are a ton of roads that I thought were 20 or 25, and they're 30. And I'm like, okay, this, I mean, perfect example right by my house is Cleveland, Redan, Cleveland to wherever that road is, right by 7-Eleven there. Yeah, yep. I mean, I couldn't believe that was 30 miles an hour. And there's, yeah, just not safe 30 mile an hour road. I couldn't believe it. So I'd say we look at some of those too down the road and just say, why are these not 25? It's the middle of a neighborhood. You know, it's crazy.
That was one of the alternatives that was identified in the previous discussion. It is something that internally as staff that we're looking at. So we're studying it. Just, I don't have a final product to bring back to you yet.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know for me, it's just like a mental thing. When I'm in a 25, it's totally different than when I'm in a 30, you know, because I could be doing 38 in a 30 and think I'm okay, you know? I mean, just...
Has there been discussions in that of also adding traffic calming measures to those roads, including to the roadway surface itself?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
If I can just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to express support for the public, painting of intersections and possibly incorporating some public art. I don't know how exactly that would work, but I have seen that in other communities, and I think that would be fantastic. And again, as much attention as we can draw to those spaces, the better off we're gonna be. And it is something that we can get going, you know, as soon as possible.
So I'll take the heat off of Gary this time. I'll be the one to mention the MUTCD. So if we were to paint crosswalks, we would be putting markings in the street that are not in conformance with the MUTCD. And as a city council, it's a policy decision, and you may do that. But as Gary points out, there are two groups of people who use the MUTCD, and that's engineers and lawyers. So if there was to be an accident in that intersection, one of the allegations could be made that it was not done in conformance with the MUTCD. And then I'll also save Alderman Beck from having to mention her countermeasure to that, 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 you know, the Federal Highway Safety Administration is potentially very slow at, of updating to what might be a safer thing that, you know, for whatever reason. And they did just update the MUTCD. There is, I don't think that their changes are official yet, but they specifically mentioned in a seminar that a lot of us attended about what changes are being made, that they considered the painted crosswalk, and they feel that there is not enough, research has been done about the effectiveness of those, or whether they're more distracting than creating a safe environment. And don't shoot the messenger, it's just what their position is.
One question, we don't, I hate comparing ourselves to them, so I won't do it often, but is a road designation different in Geneva, or did they just choose to do, just to do it?
If you see painted sidewalks, they just have determined that they're not gonna follow MUTCD.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, and there's a difference between painting sidewalks and painting intersections.
I meant the whole intersection, just like, honestly, like...
That's not a traffic control device, so that doesn't qualify under MUTCD.
So just kind of as far as the support and everything, you know, I have no opinion on the Hawk, so it sounds like a lot of people are for that. But one thing I want to point out with the street trees, Chris, I actually did look, and there's a sidewalk at the cemetery. I brought up Google Earth and saw that, so.
It goes all the way down to the baseball field, so?
Yeah.
They have it.
Yeah.
Out of that residence.
And, and I really do think that there is a lot of opportunity to add trees, especially during 31. And I know that this is gonna be part of another discussion, that there's always that concern how it's gonna be paid for. And one of the potential things that the bag fees could be used for are for trees for traffic calming throughout the community. So I think that's, this is a great opportunity where we can have a win-win with two different projects that we're working on. So I'm, I'm definitely in support of doing the trees, because I do think that it would create some calming. I know when we think of trees, we think of the big ones, but even with Scott's memo that came in, they're like, we can do some short trees that don't interfere with the lines. So just a reminder, like, when we think of trees, it's not always the big ones. It's anything that can kind of calm things down. I'm a proponent of the painting of the intersections. I hear what you're saying, and we might need to be strategic on how we use that. But I think there might be some opportunities where we can do some cool things.
Now, for purposes of this discussion, we're just talking about Route 31.
I hear what you're saying and we might need to be strategic on how we use that. But I think there might be some opportunities where we can do some cool things.
Now, for purposes of this discussion, we're just talking about Route 31, right? Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, and to that point, I don't disagree with Alderman Beck at all when she says the FHWA is slow to respond and IDOT's equally slow to respond. So if we make a request in the permit, as I said earlier on, we can request anything in the permit, we just need to know what to request. We can make the request in the permit, and I've heard consensus for the street trees and the hawk system and painting in the intersection. But it's going to take 14 people plus the mayor, plus our state representatives to pressure IDOT in order to try and get a yes for that. Because if we just submitted it to a permit, IDOT's going to turn around and say, no, it's flat out. So it's going to have to take intervention politically to say to IDOT, let's try painting an intersection and see how it works. That's going to have to come from higher up than it is.
You need a unanimous resolution.
No, personal contact, really. Our state representatives.
A full court press though, a resolution, phone calls, follow-ups.
Well, Gary, I would love to go visit them. I would love to go have. Yeah, no, to just to Schaumburg or wherever, you know, District One's office is. I've been there before, I've sat down with them before to talk about the road diet. So I'm hoping that there could be a committee of us that would go and represent Batavia's wishes with staff to have a preliminary discussion, you know, either as we're submitting the permit or in advance of submitting the permit. If this is going to go into that same permit.
Is your car big enough to hold the subcommittee?
If you can fit in three car seats, yes.
We'll get on the train.
Yeah.
And I also, you know, maybe we put a letter together that's signed by all of us that says, we are all in support of this as a whole, in addition to us reaching out individually for that. But if they see that we're as a whole on this and we're, this is something that's very important to us, I think that would be helpful.
The only thing I would say is that we, we have some standard, I don't know if this is okay, but I would suggest we have some standardized language or few key points to get across if we're doing personal messages, just so that we're all just piling on with the same exact, you know, this is what we want, this is what, you know, we think's going to, blah, blah, blah.
Staff will give us the phone numbers and our talking points.
I have the opportunity to talk with some regularity to the IDOT people from Schaumburg in my role in Chicago. And the last conversation I had was, they asked me what was the story in Batavia that we've now had two pedestrian slash accidents on Route 31 at places we had previously marked for crossing with the lights. And they said that they were looking at that very carefully and that there seemed to be something wrong here. And so I think we're going to run into some pretty significant, I don't want to use the word opposition, but a lot of questions and how we're going to get around, why did we have two people involved in serious personal injury accidents, both of which ended up, I believe, in lawsuits so far. And so our history is not real good here.
Yeah, but I mean, I've been counting now week by week. There were 17 car accidents between the last two COW meetings, I believe. And I'm not going to stop sharing to pull up my notes here, but I think there were 12 since our last COW meeting, car accidents here in the city. And four of them were on Route 31. So certainly a couple, the pedestrian incidences are tragic. However, IDOT's road is causing a lot of car accidents and I don't think we should discount the safety of our drivers either. And we should mention that to IDOT about safety improvements.
So in addition to our comments downstate, we are also forgetting that we have a community behind us or we're following the community's lead as well. So utilizing the momentum we have already after these tragic incidents is going to be critical in us getting their attention. Just the fact that after those incidents, we were able to get many state reps and Kane County reps here because of our community outreach. We need to utilize those people to help us get our state and county reps downstate as well as our support.
We should give marching orders in and tell them where.
I'm sure they're listening.
One quick clarification. In this memo, the painting of the intersections on Route 31, we're, right now, we're just talking about just, still just updating our crosswalks and maybe getting extended lines behind it. That's, we're not talking about rainbows or anything right now for Route 31, right?
No, I'm picturing solid. No, I'm picturing like Geneva, like downtown Geneva has solid, like their intersections are brick and then their sidewalks are pavement in some areas. And so it's a very clear difference. I don't think, I may have hidden that slide with those pictures.
Somewhere, but it is, it is to distinguish between, it is to distinguish between road, straight road to intersection like you have there.
Yep, just solid. Let's not go crazy with rainbows. Let's just.
And this is on Route 31, right, that we're talking about?
Yes.
Because we have the bricks already across Wilson in Route 31.
As our crosswalks, yeah.
As the crosswalks. Yeah. Thank you.
If I could chime in one thing, I just want to clarify, I support all those things except for trees. I don't, unless they come where residents are putting them in or there's a grant, I wouldn't spend any money on that. So I wasn't sure Gary had mentioned he thinks there's consensus. I don't know if there is. If that's the majority, then I'm all for it, but.
Would you support a $25 tree?
No.
He's not talking about the $4,000 trees.
I should have clarified, Alderman, you're right. Because the trees would be on us anyways. We would have to get a permit from IDOT to plant them, but they'd be all on us. It's, IDOT will not care if we want to plant a tree. IDOT will care about the hawk system and the pavement striping.
I just want to clarify, they're not Kirk Road trees, that's all.
But the tree could also be tabled with the discussion about the bag fee also, and how those correlate.
Yeah, is your objection, Nick, the cost or the existence of trees?
Well, I'm not against the existence of trees. This is how rumors get started. No, I love trees, I just, the cost, and I don't. All the studies aside, I think on 31, the improvement wouldn't be seen or not worth the cost.
All right, can we move on? It sounds like, and tell me if there's more hands raised, I'm so sorry. That we're, we're aligning okay on these four bullets. To have conversations with IDOT.
I don't think we addressed the last bullet at all, did we? The fate of the RRFB in the meantime.
Except for thinking we're hot.
Well, I mentioned that I think that's an even going. And that we should call it the double RFBs.
We understand that we can't remove them unless somebody takes them out.
Not if we ask, we can ask. This could be part of what we're asking. I'm heavily in favor of getting rid of them.
And I'm heavily in favor of keeping them.
Mark's heavier.
Gary, is that correct that we can't remove them unless they're?
Permit.
Oh, okay, so we ask and they say, yes, we can.
Or an accident to happen at the location.
I am not for removing them unless we can put the hawks up, but that is going to take some time. So, sorry, Mark.
Did I see a resident hand up?
Yeah. Two quick questions.
Sure.
Technologically, will the hawk system be able to interface with the fire department's existing system for prioritization for emergency vehicles? Or would it create a stop and slow down for emergency vehicles? The same question is, could, are the clocks able to interface with traffic lights upstream and downstream? Or are we just going to create a very stop and go traffic? As a resident, those would be concerns I'd have with hawks.
They're not active unless a pedestrian wants to cross the street.
So again, if a pedestrian is crossing the street and a fire department vehicle is approaching, who gets priority? As I understand the existing traffic light system, it gives the fire department priority. That's, I was just asking if that's part of the technology.
That I don't know.
That would be, again, I just put it on your list of things to research.
I would think that it would be the same if you are at a traffic signal and you're a pedestrian crossing the intersection and fire department truck is coming, you get out of the way. Fire department goes, you know, it will be no different than having a traffic signal.
Just listening, I didn't see that as one of the things noted in the technology.
Actually, under state law, even the fire truck under emergency conditions has to yield to a pedestrian. Yes, and we request permission to pass through red lights, but we still have to yield and we still must stop to pedestrians or other traffic.
Just to clarify though, does it, and I don't know the name of the system, but the flashing.
We use an opticom system within the city of Batavia.
Right, doesn't it give?
But that traffic control device would have to have an additional system provided through opticom for us to control it, so.
Just asking.
A hawk system is automatically set up for our emergency response. We use a different system called an opticom system. But there is, Hawk also does have a system, we just don't utilize it here in the city of Batavia.
I'm assuming it would be similar to approaching a stop sign when the hawks are on.
Yeah, absolutely. It's like a stop sign or a school bus for that matter. We cannot pass a school bus. We actually have to stop and wait for permission to stop a school, to go past a school bus or any pedestrian traffic. So it's, the lights and sirens only request the right of way, does not actually give us the right of way. That's why we use an opticom system to control lights and systems for the green. You're welcome.
By show of hands, the number of people who are in favor of pursuing the removal of the double RFB at this time. Five and a half, or are you counting?
Six to four, so.
Six. And yeah, so that's six. Do you want to put that as a separate discussion on a future?
Let's talk a little more about Abby. We should probably bring that back.
Just the RRFB?
Yeah, just to increase comfort or to, just flesh out a little bit more. Or at least figure out a way to accomplish it.
Yeah, I would also request before we do that, if you haven't in the past couple of weeks, make sure you walk through one, give them a try.
Do we want to consent, vote on the trees or is that, or are we, could we decide?
One tree eater here.
I think you killed the tree plan.
Tree hugger, you got it wrong. You misread it. That's something we need to go. To tie down with. True, true.
I don't think we need to finalize the tree issue tonight. I believe Scott Haynes has reservations about trees in such small parkways. So that's something that we certainly could circle back on and have another discussion on. The rapid flashing beacons, if it's eight to six at this time, staff will just proceed forward, assuming that they're going to remain in place as is. And then we could go in, within the permit though, would be the request for the hawk and the painting intersections.
And I would like to have that meeting. I would like to attend that meeting. And I think there's other city council members I would like to as well. And then if I can go to my next slide, we don't have to get like.
Yeah, I'm not anticipating Alderman Beck that we're going to have a meeting per se. I think, I think it needs to be state reps and state senators and council members pressuring IDOT, just like Alderman Miller just laid out. I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to go sit down in a meeting with them. That's not what I anticipate.
That's what I anticipate. Why wouldn't you?
We can also do that.
There are 100 people understaffed at IDOT.
Well, the first step will be submitting our application for permit and then allowing them to respond, and then we can determine what the next step.
Then we can determine the next step or after that, exactly.
We could certainly talk in subcommittee about a communication plan and how to best mobilize the council to help us get the message to IDOT to lobby them.
Sounds great.
Okay. Kenan? Okay, are we good to move on to? Will we have a seventh inning stretch or where are we at here?
Wasn't there going to be a post-road diet discussion on this as well? I believe that was postponed till this meeting. Okay, sorry.
And we could, we can postpone it to the next meeting. I mean, I guess it is a post-road diet. I just know that given the length of time it takes, having that conversation in tandem so that we can start talking about things like curb extensions and pedestrian islands and just have that upfront would, would help in the years ahead.
So that would be appropriate for council to come to a consensus and direction by the time we have the formal phase one public meeting. It would be in August. And that way, that way, city council can render its statements on those matters and be part of the phase one process.
And the phase one process is related to the downtown portion of the road diet. As opposed to the portion that's going straight to permit at IDOT, which is everything but the downtown.
And it's contemplated that everything that's going straight to permit will be, will be everything except the downtown area and essentially in the context of pavement striping.
Right.
If we want to do curb extensions or islands or make modifications to the downtown, IDOT has always said that would need to be part of the formal phase one study process.
Yeah, and the curb extensions that I'm picturing, knowing that right now we're only dealing with paint, you know, as this example in Chicago shows, you can do them with just paint. So we wouldn't have to do the whole carbon gutter thing to start. So yeah, just having that conversation for these intersections at Morton and at Union, the parts that are going to be permitted, I think would be really important to have that conversation at this point.
Abby, was the proposal for the pedestrian islands just downtown or was that on the length?
I think it would be really interesting to see what's feasible on the lengths. They are certainly the, you know, when you look at the traffic safety matrixes that are out there, they are certainly a major benefit to pedestrian safety. And we know that one was already approved by IDOT for Route 31 in Batavia in the downtown area. So if there was a spot where they're appropriate in other areas, you know, why not make the ask, why not throw everything at the dartboard and see what sticks at this point?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where one would be appropriate because there's residential along almost the entire stretch. I mean, as soon as you get past the, the, the las erans, that's the only place that I could see otherwise. Yeah, you can't block driveways. I will be vehemently opposed to an island crossing that forces me to always turn right out of my driveway and only come right into my driveway.
Well, shoot, Mark, that's where I was going to put it.
I figured you weren't going to put it in front of my house, but it would affect. I can't imagine a place where it would work.
And I can't either, but that's why we throw it on the dartboard and we actually look at the studies. And then real quick advocacy, so there is still a state bill that was out there about truck traffic and designating truck routes and that helps us with the turn radiuses at some of these intersections. We already talked about writing a letter about through our downtown, well, no, we didn't really talk about that. We talked about a communication plan and we should talk about and reconfirm whether or not the whole city council is unanimous around the road diet going through our downtown. But then wanted to point out and wondered if this could be shared. There is an IDOT's, IDOT's Vulnerable Road User Map, which is very similar to what Active Transportation put together for the city of Batavia. put together for the city of Batavia, for folks to, you know, put a note on a map where they have found that issues, issues exist. So it would be great for our community to do that for up and down the state roads through Batavia.
Lori Bodderman has been promoting that since they announced it.
Wonderful. Sorry I missed it.
All right.
Commenting back on the pedestrian medians, I think one recommendation I would make is putting them near bus stops for people who, you know, might want to make use of those just as a point of focus.
I think this was my last slide for future discussion items. Public arts for improvements, this is kind of a whole city, not just Batavia Avenue, and so something I was going to say for strategic planning. Naperville has a toolkit for traffic calming, and then there's also Vision Zero that would be an interesting thing to review and decide if it was appropriate for Batavia. But we can be done, if you'd like to be done.
We will definitely circle back though. All right, did I hear consensus then that we're going to call a special meeting for next Tuesday to discuss concepts for dam removal and then for the potential uses for single bank fee? Did I hear consensus for that?
Yes.
As much as I want to talk about the dam, I can wait because it's 10:15.
Okay.
Clarify, that won't have any vote, it's just going to be a discussion.
Discussion items.
Yep.
I want to hear more about Nick and how much he hates trees, we could talk about that too.
As a matter of record.
And moving on to last item then, let's do a project status first.
I've got a few. We have received the samples for our Columbarian sculptures, and so soon we'll be putting out notice to the community about where those will be displayed at City Hall and invite the public to provide their comments and select their preference for which one should be selected. Just wanted to let the public know that with our meeting schedule of meeting on the second and fourth Tuesdays for Committee of the Whole in the month of August, that actually puts them in the same week as the city council meetings that are on the first and third Wednesdays. So our meetings in August are going to be, the city council meetings are on August 7th and 21st, and the Committee of the Whole meetings will be on the following Tuesdays, August 8th and August 22nd. The police department has successfully deployed our drone on a number of occasions to include critical incidents, traffic crash reconstruction, and oversight of our special events for the purpose of public safety. And we're also very pleased to report that we've been notified by King County DUI Task Force that we've been selected to receive grant funding to cover the cost of our drone. And so the total savings to the city are about $7,300, and we should receive the funds in just a matter of days. So kudos to the police department for pursuing that funding to cover the cost of our drone, and it really is being used very effectively. The fire department will be providing first aid and CPR training to all of our public works personnel. This is biennial training effort to ensure that our public works staff are prepared in the event that an emergency should occur. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Hello? If not, do we have any other, other from council?
Dan?
Yeah.
I know you, you commented after Susan Russo spoke about the carbon capture and storage, but I just wanted to throw a second behind that, make sure it got on a future agenda officially.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And I have one other. A while back in January, I had asked that we have a discussion on, I know we have a lot of items for discussion, but on ambulance service, and you were gathering information on that. Laura, I'd appreciate if we get that on a.
Can you remind me, what was the information?
The ambulance service back in January received a letter from the firefighters stating they would be willing to drive the ambulance, but we since have learned that the contract prevents that, and those, that's the basic discussion we had, and I had asked that we had further discussion on that.
Another thing, now that we're past, well, I still get phone calls, but now that we're past the garbage contract, one of the things.
Never mind. Yeah, do you go out anywhere?
One of the, one of the things that kind of came up during that was Groot wanting, they would have given us a significant discount if they didn't have to dump at the waste management facility. And.
Try it carefully, but yeah.
That was like the first meeting, he said, we could have come in with a lot better number if you would have let us dump.
Yeah, he didn't tell us what the number was going to be, but he said he was going, they would give us a discount if they didn't have to use our facility, the waste management facility, they could use theirs. And that was part of their discussion, but reading that contract, that contract right now is a contract that we always have to, any waste provider in Batavia has to use that facility. So I would, I want to, if somebody will join me, I'd like to direct staff to look into what would it take to renegotiate that contract, because that's the second forever contract that we have in the city, one being for electric and now being for waste. And we, we dump very little waste percentage wise in that facility. It seems like we should be able to negotiate something with waste management.
So Alderman, it's already on our radar, we're trying to let the dust settle a little bit, but it's the host agreement with Onyx slash Waste Management that we need to address first. Our contract with Groot obligates them to use our transfer facility because that's what we're obligated to do. Five years from now, when we have a new contract with a hauler, we're certainly hoping to have flexibility in that new contract. So we have four and a half years left to negotiate that, and we're just trying to let the dust settle a little bit.
No, no, I get that, and that's, I just, I don't want it to be something that's forgotten about, and then all of a sudden we talk about it four years from now and it's too late.
We're going to need some, you know, Waste Management's going to want some sort of negotiation from us.
Sure, and that's something we can talk about as council later, once you guys have a chance to see what we can do.
Yep. My recollection from dealing with some waste transfer facilities in the past is that there's some pretty complex language and things like that relate to that. So we probably want to have legal counsel look at that and see about, you know, if we get out of that, is that going to mean we're going to have to go and redo the citing requirements and everything else for a waste transfer facility? So I don't know if that's the case or not, but that, that may be something that we have to think about.
It could be a lot more complicated than we anticipate.
Right, exactly.
I covered this as a reporter and anyone for years, so.
Do you remember all the details, Dan?
I feel like there was a denwitty on the, on the committee, so.
Can I add to that conversation too, that maybe, is there like an ordinance we could pass that would bar us from ever making forever contracts ever again?
With a.
As Scott, as Scott said, I think that much of what is in the, what's the agreement called? The host agreement needs to be in there, otherwise they would not have received their citing license from the state of Illinois.
And there's a, there's a real financial impact to it too, so.
I'd just like to throw my two cents on the table on a variety of subjects. I will suggest to you that in the world that I go to in Chicago, there is very high concern about what the state finances of the state of Illinois are going to be in the next couple of years. I mean, we've been rolling in here with a lot of money from them for a lot of different things, and there's a lot of people who are of the opinion that those days are about to come apart. And I've got an article I'm going to send out to all of you that was recently published in the Rockford Registered Star from the mayor of Rockford, who's screaming and hollering up there because he's very upset because the state now has taken, we're supposed to get 10% of the state income tax on a per capita basis at each city and village in the state of Illinois. And the state has deferred 4% of that 10% for themselves because they're trying to keep their act together and look good. But there's a lot of people who are telling us, if you're thinking about getting a lot of state money for anything, and I was sitting here tonight thinking I was maybe after going to give this speech when we started talking about the dam, because there's all kinds of versions and ideas about what the dam should or should not be. But there are a lot of those versions that have a lot of cost, that don't have any money available for it from any place, and you have to go no further than the city of St. Charles and ask them what happened to their $38 million redevelopment of the dam north of Main Street in St. Charles. Where's that money? Well, there's no money to do it. And that's because the state of Illinois is saying, we're not here to do this. So there's, there's a lot of things moving in the works there, and I, I think that that waste management contract that we had out at the lift station, the old steel mill out there, the waste transfer station, has been a real nice piece of revenue for the city of Batavia to get. And I think we should do everything we can to try to hold on to that regardless of who the operators are. I have my own opinions about some things I know about Groot that I don't want to say at this moment, but I know there's some people in the background working there that do some very interesting things that I think if it comes out, you guys won't be too impressed by some of the things that are being promoted by some of these folks. So we got to keep our eyes open here moving forward, because this flow of money, which I suppose probably the blame for it maybe starts in Washington with all this money we gave away. You know, we were going to pay college tuitions and we were going to do all this great stuff, and now we're not going to. And I would suggest there's more of that conversation on a variety of fronts is going to come to us in the state of Illinois. And there's a, there's a lot of feeling out there that Illinois is about to experience a major upheaval. And we talk about IDOT here tonight, I know in talking to the executive director of IDOT personally, because I'm his vice chairman on the State Transportation Policy Committee, he's crying to me about, he's 100 people short of his, of his acceptable staffing at IDOT, specifically at the Schaumburg and the Rockford and Chicago facilities. He's really down on his staff, so he doesn't have a lot of room to start new things or give new ideas or review stuff because just doesn't have the staff, and it's supposedly because the state doesn't have the money to pay him. So sorry I end on such a sourpuss note, but I think it's all of you need to know that, that that's out there, and it's something to be thinking about as we sit here. And you guys do a great job in my opinion, but I think we've got to be awful cautious in the days ahead as to what we are or are not going to be able to do from a financial perspective, and what financial things we now have at to our advantage that maybe we think we can change or get rid of, but I'm not so sure any of that's going to be real easy.
I forget the number, it's north of a half million though, isn't it?
Pardon?
It's north of a half a million dollars, isn't it? How much we take in from the transfer station?
More than that.
More than 500, 600, 600, 600,000.
600,000, 700,000 dollars.
So we have to replace 600,000 dollars in revenue if we were to shut that down.
I'm not suggesting to shut it down, I'm suggesting to make it so that we don't have to have the 3% of garbage from Batavia that goes to that facility, or our garbage is 3% of what goes to that facility. There's still, we're still getting 97% of the revenue if that were to happen, so we're talking.
You're not looking to recite it, you're just looking for some flexibility.
Renegotiation, if they say, we're leaving if you do this, then okay, we come back to the table and say, please don't leave.
And that is absolutely something. Okay. Any other others? Motion to.
May I just make it clear that we're putting items 15 and 16 on the agenda on the 18th. Does item 14 go on there, or is, are the group that are talking about these issues need some time to further discuss those other?
We probably need time, but should we take a placeholder on that meeting? We'll take a placeholder on that meeting.
What does that mean?
Means.
Just put it on the agenda. If we don't talk about it, then we don't talk about it.
I'd like to talk about it more.
Yeah.
14, 15, and 16.
Yeah.
I didn't know we had any more to talk about that next week.
We were just talking about post-road diet engineering, and you guys said that you needed to go back and talk more about removal of RRFB.
And possibly communication plan for just.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, that'd be about it.
I think we should talk about having more cows, because I'm kind of not happy about having these last forever, every single time.
We did used to do these every Tuesday, and we did used to do.
I was fully fine with that because they didn't last till forever, every single time.
Is this?
There are fewer items on the agenda.
I think what's going to go back down to reasonable.
I don't want to jump back into the four cows, or you know, four cows a month, but I think adding meetings to make sure that we're not here until 2:00 AM, when it's appropriate, yeah, because we are in the chunk, like there's just a lot.
Right.
Happening right now, and that's not always the case.
Right.
That was my other though.
But a time parameter on it, as Leah suggested, like we go, okay, we know that there's a lot for us to grind through, and we just go until 10:00, and then we know that that gets put on the next agenda.
The only challenge with that is citizens read this on Friday and expect we're going to talk about some things.
Yes, we had people on yesterday that went home.
Yeah.
They were here because they thought we were going to talk about.
If you're going to put a time limit on it, you should probably time limit each line item, you know, break it up, and then at that point you hit everything and then say, okay, we need to talk about this more.
So we can, we can, then that holds us to a different level of accountability because we have to be honest with ourselves on whether or not we were prepared to talk about certain items, because some of us read memos, some of us didn't, some had time, some didn't. And that's, we had, had questions that could have been asked offline of staff members beforehand.
I also just want to comment though, that I'm making that comment was not meant to make this last longer, so.
Way to go.
Just contemplate it.
This is, this is an investment in our, in ourselves and better discussion.
Choose wisely.
It truly is, it is.
Need more meetings about meetings?
Okay, Scott.
If you want to defer the executive session, we can.
Oh, no, now we're having it, we're absolutely going to have.
Okay. Up to you.
Motion to go.
Let's go to the executive session. Motion second, roll call please.
Aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Pfeifer?
Aye.
Chantzit?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwe?
Aye.
Sura?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Yep, aye, whatever.
And we're not expecting any decisions.